All right, I'm gonna call the June 10th Town Council Work Session to Order. We're gonna start out with the High Country Conservation Center Annual Update.
Awesome. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Happy to kick us off today with the High Country Conservation Center. We have Executive Director Jen Shank and Climate Action Director Jess Hoover with us, as well as, as we refer to her, the new Rachel. But Heather Allen is here as well. She's the Community Programs Director. The High Country Conservation Center helps support the community through technical assistance, coaching, facilitation, collaboration. They provide a lot of support to staff here working on our sustainability initiatives here for the town of Breckenridge. They help administer programs that you might have heard of called Energy Smart Colorado, Resource Wise Business Program, the Climate Action Collaborative. They help with water conservation programming and also zero waste, of course, which is their bread and butter. The High Country Conservation Center is supported through about $243,000 from the town of Breckenridge. Sixty-seven percent of that is passed through rebates to residents and businesses. So while they do have administrative costs, the majority of the money that we support does go to energy conservation programming and helping to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in our community. We pay for that through the REMP Revenue Funds. So we directly collect fees on outdoor energy use through the REMP program, and that revenue provides those rebates for the community. So that's a little bit about how they are funded and how we provide those pass-throughs. So with that, I'll invite the staff to come up and present their annual recap from programming in 2024 and allow Council to ask any questions, and I'll be here to answer questions as well. So with that, Jen and Jess?
Thanks, Jessie. Welcome, Jen.
Hi. Thank you. Nice to see you all. I'm Jen Shank with High Country Conservation Center. For you of you who I don't know. And I'm gonna get us kicked off with Zero Waste, and then Jess is gonna talk climate and energy. Then it's gonna come back to me to talk about water conservation. So, next slide, please. Or, oh, I'm sorry, May, you told me how to do this. My mistake.
Time. So, next time you come, it'll be a totally new thing.
All right, cool. I can handle it. Once a year, changes only once a year. Um, great. So this is just a quick reminder of our community-wide diversion goal, to get to forty percent by twenty thirty-five. We are currently at, as of 2024, we were at twenty-two percent last year. In terms of pay-as-you-throw and universal recycling, obviously, this is a very hot topic for us in Breckenridge and across the county. So we have continued to do a lot of support, working with Hayden and Jessie's team on universal recycling. So those commercial properties, including businesses and HOAs, who had a deadline of a couple weeks ago to get into compliance on the commercial side of universal recycling. In terms of pay-as-you-throw, we are working with residents in unincorporated Summit County and in fact, across the entire community. For Waste Management customers, pay-as-you-throw will be going into effect on August 31st. And I specifically mentioned the Waste Management, just in case you know anyone who lives in Silver, Blue River, and so on, Waste Management is doing pay-as-you-throw. They will be requiring recycling starting on October, on August 31st. So we've been taking a lot of calls and talking to a number of residents about that program. You can also see on your slide that recycling has increased ten percent between 2023 and 2024. So that's community-wide. I believe you all understand that we don't track that data. We don't have a way to accurately track it by town. So that is a community-wide number, and we certainly hope, we believe that part of that ten percent is because pay-as-you-throw went into effect in Frisco and Breck in late 2023 into 24. Hopefully. Strong Future Grants, I am not going to read you this slide, but please know that Strong Future funds a grant program, community-wide. These are the grants that were awarded in 2024, but many of these projects are still in the works. All of these entities have through the summer of 2025 to get these projects done. And then we had a grant process this year. Our application deadline just closed on June 1st. Jessie is on the committee. We're meeting next week to review. We got nineteen, or sorry, seventeen grants. Nine grants above $25,000. The big grants are between 25 and 75K. So we got nine of those applications and then eight smaller ones, and we will be considering those as a committee and making recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners in July. We have roughly $285,000 in funding for these 2025 grants that we'll be awarding. I should also quickly mention that almost everything I'm talking about related to zero waste is funded by Strong Future. So Jessie mentioned that HC3's funding is primarily, sorry, the town of Breck's funding for HC3 is really for climate, energy, and water programs. There is no town of Breck funding for recycling and zero waste programs, since most of our recycling funding comes from Summit County.
Did you say 125,000 for grants this year?
Two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand. Yeah. Sorry.
With the big ones, then?
I probably wasn't, yes. Um, okay, this just highlights a few of the things that we did in 2024 and the number of people that we reached. We are still doing oops tags, going around checking bins quickly to see who's recycling properly or not, giving out little gold stars or giving people nice tips if there's something they could be doing better for their curbside collection. Some of the recycler events are actually events that we're going out to the recycling sites. We go to Breck, Silverthorn, and Frisco, and we'll, we'll be out there for two hours. They're designated times that we promote in advance, and we're there on site answering resident recycling questions. Food scrap program continues to grow. We have almost 4,000 participants, and you can see that we diverted almost 400,000 pounds of food scraps through this program last year. So, super exciting. I'll talk more about Spanish outreach. This is our homeowners association and business assistance. You can see we've really been working on our Latino community outreach. Which I'll talk a little bit more about in a couple minutes, but here are some of the stats. And again, we have been working with businesses and HOAs in Breckenridge and across the county on universal recycling outreach, but also just in general, anyone who has a question. So if you all know of anyone who's an HOA, let's have them give us a call. Marketing, we've really grown our marketing, particularly in the Spanish language outreach. This is, well, this is a PDF, and I don't need to play the video, but if it was a PowerPoint, this is a really cool video in Spanish. We are seeing tremendous reach and response rate for our Spanish marketing outreach. And so we're really, really excited to finally be reaching slowly the Spanish-speaking community in Summit County. And then you can see our recycling views are up. Okay, so now we get into 2025. So already talked about this a little bit, but our focus is very much pay-as-you-throw and universal recycling. Even though Breck's deadline has already passed for universal recycling, we anticipate continuing to work with Jessie's team on making sure that we can help homeowners associations and businesses. Second thing, we hired a bilingual position, a bilingual coordinator, who is doing, Jess will talk more about it, but this person started last week. Her name is Lucia Mayer. She is a native Spanish speaker from Colombia, and she is gonna be working on zero waste programs, climate, energy, water conservation, essentially that everything that HC3 works on. So, super excited to have her on board. She is in part funded by Strong Future, but mostly from a grant that Jess got, that Jess will talk about. We are also continuing to focus on commercial composting. So trying to work more with restaurants and more with grocery stores to really have a bigger impact than just, you know, more accumulation than just working with those 4,000 residents that are already part of the program. And then CND, next slide. So last year, we conducted a waste composition study specific to construction and demolition waste up at the landfill. And so what we found is that roughly forty percent of construction waste that's going into landfill, let me back up for a second. In terms of what's going into the landfill that's construction waste, about thirty percent of the waste that is land-filled at the scrap, Summit County Resource Allocation Park, which is the landfill, about thirty percent of that waste is construction waste. So of that waste, what we found through this study is that forty-three percent of that is divertible through our current systems. And that forty-three percent is the stuff at the bottom of this slide. So the current materials that we can recycle in Summit County are wood, concrete and asphalt, cardboard and scrap metal. I know that last time we presented to you all, we were talking about policy framework that had been created last year with the Zero Waste Task Force and a consultant. I think at this point, we are more focused on voluntary measures and incentives for the builders, at least for the short term. We are, we are also, HC3 is working with CDPE on a cost analysis. We should have that by the end of this year. And so we can have a better assessment of how much we think it will cost builders to start recycling on site. The county, you can see on your slide, just hired a construction and demolition specialist to work with contractors, to start to dig into the data, to get some software to work with contractors. And then this cool little picture, it's called a rotor chopper. It's a wood grinder. And so now, not only can we have wood chips that go into the compost, but we can also grind things into mulch and color it so the scrap can sell that to consumers and landscapers. So a lot happening with CND. Like I said, I think the short-term push is gonna be more on the voluntary side, and then we'll probably come back and talk about policy more in the next year or two. And I think that might be all I have.
Jen, can you talk a little bit about the currently, the materials that can currently be recycled? Is there any education effort to builders, or what is going on?
Thank you so much. Yeah, sorry, Carol. I'm just trying to go faster, because I'm probably short on time already. We are gonna be working with the new CND specialist up at the scrap. His name is Roy. And we will be working with Roy and the scrap on creating some workshops. We anticipate those will start this fall. I am also, we have some money that the scrap and HC3 are gonna talk about, trying to reallocate some Strong Future funds for this year to provide some incentives over the summer during the building season to builders who want to voluntarily participate in CND initiatives. So, yes, if you know of any contractors who would like to work with us and who are willing to divert materials, please have them reach out to me.
And that's this summer that you're hoping to get some of that pilot?
Yes.
Great.
And it's not, it's not a fully established program, because their CND specialists just started a few weeks ago. But we are really anxious to get things up and running and to work with contractors directly. So, yes.
Does the grinder go through nails and bolts and all that stuff?
Great question. Yes, it does. It has a magnet that pulls it out. Pulls them out. Yeah.
Grinds around them and then pulls them out before they go into combos?
Yeah. We actually wanna do a demo with the scrap later this year. We've had some Silverthorn Town Council members wanna come up, so I'd like to create a day in late July or early August and just invite any of you all up to check it out. I'm gonna hand this to Jess.
Just on the scrap tour, CML will be having a tour at Scrap as well. So I know that's in two weeks or so.
Okay. Thanks, everyone, for having us. It's nice to see you all today. I am going to talk about climate and energy from 2024. So as a reminder to ground ourselves, our community-wide goal is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions eighty percent by 2050. That is over 2005 levels. We have an interim goal of decreasing emissions fifty percent by 2030. And one of our biggest projects last year is the mechanism through which we track our progress, which is updating our community-wide greenhouse gas emissions inventory. So we worked with a consultant last year to update our inventory. We update it every three years. We break everything out by jurisdiction. However, these numbers are county-wide. It's pretty similar in Breckenridge for each jurisdiction. But what you can see is that energy use in buildings and transportation continue to be the largest sources of greenhouse gas emissions in Summit County. Residential, commercial, roughly thirty percent. You know, so it's about thirds, right? And then waste would be nine percent, and that waste comes from biological, that sounds weird. Biodegradable material in the landfill. So we're talking about food waste, or if we're throwing away lumber that could biodegrade. That is where those waste emissions come from. We can also look at emissions by source. So this is really helpful and, I think, useful for thinking about the strategies we pursue for reducing our emissions, because we can see that a lot of our emissions come from electricity and natural gas. And what's, the good news in this is that those electricity emissions have been declining and will continue to decline, both through efforts of, you know, town of Breckenridge and your own renewable energy policies and procurement, as well as Excel Energy's efforts to green its grid. So whether or not you have solar panels on your house right now, everybody who is connected to the Excel Energy grid in Breckenridge gets forty-two percent of its electricity from renewable sources, primarily wind, some solar as well. So that portion of the pie over the coming years is going to continue to decrease as we all get more renewable electricity on the grid. So proportionally, that means natural gas is going to increase, and so this is a really important place for us to focus. It's why you will hear me and Jessie and groups across the country and the state talk about electrification. The idea that we should be switching from appliances that use natural gas to appliances that run on electricity. That is exactly why electrification is important, because we cannot make natural gas a renewable resource, but we can make electricity from renewable resources. Cars and trucks continue to be big sources of emissions as well. And then you can see landfill gas and that fun catch-all other category, which are all things that are less than one percent. If you want to know what they are, I can tell you later. So what does this mean? What kind of progress have we made since we adopted the Climate Action Plan? Well, greenhouse gas emissions across the county and, oh, well, across the county are up two percent since 2017, which is not to say that we have not been hard at work. It really just goes to show how challenging it can be and how much work we need to do on a very broad systemic level and why things like policy, like REMP, are so important or building codes are so important, because you can influence a large sector all at once. Okay, so I hit all those notes. Happy to talk more about that. So what are some of the really exciting things that we were doing in 2024? Well, we worked with Jessie and Teddy to launch a new program called Electrify Breck, which is at the bottom of the slide, but this is, this is a picture of a participant you can see from the Wellington neighborhood. And through this program, we offered really generous incentives for folks to, folks in deed-restricted properties. We're focusing on our local workforce, and we helped them install heat pumps in their homes. Now, these homes also use natural gas for their domestic hot water. So nobody pulled out their boiler or their furnace, as was the case in one home. They still have it, but they're relying on their heat pump for, in this case in particular, eighty percent of their heating load. So this homeowner has decreased his natural gas use by eighty percent. And it's really exciting. We worked with four homeowners in Wellington last year, and we are getting ready to launch the program again this year. And we are going to open it to all deed-restricted neighborhoods within the town of Breckenridge for 2025. Last year, we just did a small pilot, and so we focused on the Wellington neighborhood. Building code support. So I have been in the background helping Rick and Jessie with my 2024 Codebook, which I actually don't have with me today. I usually do. And so we've been doing a lot of work on building codes and what that means for, actually, I'm skipping ahead. I'm gonna get back to that. Multifamily building research, we did some pilot study or some focus groups last year with HOAs and property managers to figure out how we could better outreach to multifamily buildings. What we found was that existing utility programs to incentivize energy efficiency are not designed for our building types here in Breckenridge and across Summit County, which is to say, they're designed for traditional apartment-style buildings where there is one owner with multiple tenants who are renters. But we run into problem with so many buildings like ours where there's condominiums, which all have individual owners, and they're governed by an HOA, and it makes it challenging for these buildings to participate in utility programs. So we hosted focus groups trying to figure out what do HOAs need? We learned that they frankly cannot afford a lot of energy efficiency improvements. And so we were working on this in conjunction with staff from Excel. I don't have good answers right now, but they heard us and they know that this is a challenge that communities like ours face and that we want to come up with creative solutions for helping multifamily buildings. It is going to inform our HC3 program design for 2025, where we would like to rethink some of the resources we provide through our business program to offer more support for multifamily HOAs. Some, two things that we heard in particular is that they're very interested in mitigating energy use from heat tape and also getting neutral third-party advice on HVAC system upgrades. So we were thinking that, okay, well, this is, these are two steps that we can take to act on what we heard from them and try to provide that assistance in order to help multifamily buildings. We also did two new electrification videos last year, and I believe one of them is playing on the socials right now. If you're on Facebook, we did a video about switching to induction stoves. And then we, so that one is on live right now. We did that with a homeowner who lives in the locals' lane neighborhood. And then we have another one that will be marketing in the fall about electric snow blowers. Okay. So Jessie mentioned our Energy Smart Colorado program. So this is our residential home energy efficiency program. These are our results from last year. The thing that I would really like to highlight is at the bottom. So a few years ago, we got feedback from folks, local full-time residents, that they couldn't afford the energy efficiency upgrades that were recommended after they did home energy audits. And so we approached our partners, including the town of Breckenridge, to ask if we could provide one hundred, rebates covering one hundred percent of the project cost to full-time working residents who earn one hundred and sixty percent of the area median income and less. And so we've begun income qualifying people, and our participation from the local workforce has skyrocketed. Whereas it was less than fifty percent before we instituted this change, you can see that is nearly seventy percent of our, of folks who are completing projects in the program right now. So that's really exciting, and we're really glad to see that, you know, your funding is really going to the local workforce and helping them make these efficiency upgrades in their homes. So, and I wanna call out too, that this family, so these are, that's actually my friend Emily, and this is her family, and they not only have been doing a lot of energy efficiency projects, but they also participated in Electrify Breck last year. So they're very excited about their heat pump. And they have solar, because they are, they're, this is an HC3, like, dream team right here. They've done all of the programs. So you can see their solar panels. They have also done Solarise. And I was chatting with Emily, and she said that their heat pump plus their solar is truly a, quote, "dream setup", because their solar panels are generating the electricity that is running their heat pump, and they are really excited about it.
Jess, for that example, can you give us ballpark? How much is the resident paying and how much rebate are they getting?
For, okay, so for their heat pump project?
Yeah, just ballpark figures, if you know.
We, what we did with the rebate stack was because people can access rebates from the federal government, as well as Excel Energy, and then as well as the town of Breck rebate. So we made sure, the rebates from the town of Breckenridge were variable based on the rebates that they were getting from Excel. It's not a flat cost per project. It's based on the size of the heat pump. So we did the math to make sure that their whole rebate stack covered seventy-five percent of the project cost. So ballpark, you know, the heat pump quotes were coming in twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand dollars, and most people were outlaying six to eight.
Okay, that's helpful to put it in perspective.
Yes. Okay. These are our cumulative impacts in Breckenridge over time. It's really fun to look at this to see, you know, since the program started, what has the impact been? So residents in Breckenridge are saving cumulative, or together, almost seventy-four thousand dollars a year on their utility bills. Solarise Summit was a program that we started right after we adopted the Climate Action Plan to increase solar installations across the county, and the town of Breckenridge has participated in this program since the beginning. So this is another cumulative slide. But we have had ninety-three participants from the town of Breckenridge since the program started. That's six hundred seventy-one kilowatts of solar. And so to put that in perspective, one of your solar gardens, they're each about five hundred kilowatts. So we've basically installed another solar garden in the town of Breckenridge across rooftops, which is really, really wonderful. And you can see that, again, the value of the electricity that is generated by all of these systems is almost a hundred thousand dollars. So, yes, people are paying for the cost of their solar system, but we can also consider these savings on their electricity bills, because their electricity costs go away. Okay, and then resource-wise is our sustainable business program. This is, these are also cumulative impacts. We have worked with a hundred and twenty-eight businesses across the town of Breckenridge since this program started. Eighty-five of them have completed improvement projects. And, you know, the bill savings are what we all like to see. So it's almost seventy thousand dollars in bill savings annually. Okay, so how are we helping to decrease greenhouse gas emissions from transportation? We do a lot of electric vehicle outreach and education. And last year, we were really excited to host our first EV ride-and-drive for the Spanish-speaking community. So we hosted this at the Dillon Valley Elementary School. We had a consultant group come up to provide Spanish support for residents of Dillon Valley. And we also were at the Mountain Dreamers Annual Celebration, showing off EVs. And the number of home chargers we've rebated in just the past few years has been really skyrocketing, and we're excited to see that. Community engagement, we host a number of events every year to help residents, you know, understand the urgency of climate action. So last year, we did an event with Breck Create at Old Masonic Hall. We hosted a speaker about the Colorado River at CMC in Breckenridge. We partnered with the Sierra Club on the film. Continuous installation was a very exciting, it is exciting for the building community. You know, it's like the non-sexy nuts and bolts of energy efficiency. And a lot more. So then that's bringing me up to this year. So this year, thanks to support from the town for sponsoring this event, we hosted ski mountaineer Caroline Gleick, ski mountaineer and former US Senate candidate. She did not win. But she's wonderful, and she gave a talk at the Riverwalk Center. We had about two hundred attendees in January. Jen mentioned these grants that we got, so we- Jen mentioned these grants that we got. So we have this EPA grant. And that grant has allowed us to hire Lucia to provide bilingual program support. So she has a goal this year to, well, over the course of the grant, she has a goal to engage twenty Spanish speaking households from across the county to get home energy audits completed and then to work with at least ten of them to complete improvement projects, which we will cover one hundred percent of the cost of. And we're also working with a creative agency to design a Spanish energy efficiency marketing campaign so that we can, you know, actually get people to sign up for the program. And Lucy is going to be out in the community doing events and working with community partners to help recruit people. We also have a grant from CDOT that's going to allow us to do more EV events this year. So we're doing three EV ride and drives this year, one of which is going to be in the South Gondola Lot in July, August. It's one of those dates, the summer. And so we're working with Teddy on that, and we're going to promote the e-ride as well at that event and hopefully get some more folks signed up for that. And then, okay, here, the builder designer workshops. We are working with Jessie and we will be hosting five workshops to support the building code adoption. And we've been surveying participants at the workshops that Rick and Jessie and team have been hosting to find out, you know, what, what does the community want to learn more about? So those workshops will be focused on things that they have told us that they are, you know, really curious to learn more about. It'll be, you know, building an all electric home, more continuous insulation and things like that. And we are hosting a workshop tomorrow about heat pumps. Heat pumps are a theme. So that is in person at the Senior Center at six thirty, six o'clock. Boy, details. Six o'clock tomorrow evening at the Senior Center. Our speaker is really great. He also has a heat pump and he's been, he has worked for Mitsubishi and he's a heat pump installer. So he's very knowledgeable and he's excited for people to ask their hard questions about how heat pumps work at ninety six hundred feet. And then finally, right before MT 2030, we are actually hosting Raleigh Williams, who, if you have been to the conference, has been the MC for the past several years. And we are having him do a climate change comedy night at the Silverthorn Pavilion. So we can hopefully laugh so we don't cry. So Jen has no time.
I'll be fast. We always put water conservation at the end, I think, because it's not something we get the majority of our funding from you all as towns. But water conservation is our largest area of growth as an organization. And it seems to be the topic that the public is most interested and passionate at the moment. So rather than just read slides, I might just click through them as I'm talking. But I would say our primary focus areas for water conservation are obviously around education and outreach. That's certainly what we specialize in as an organization. In terms of actual programs and what we are educating and outreach about, we are having, we have a few specific Water in the West community events. Our first one is next week. They are all at Highside. We partner with several local nonprofits, including Friends of Dillon Ranger District, Blue River Watershed Group, and we have different topics each month of the summer. And then we, we continue to have an irrigation assessment program. And so that focuses on outdoor water users, primarily large irrigators. So whether that's a commercial business or a homeowners association, again, focusing on that non essential turf, and you've probably heard Jessie say this, but non essential turf is, it's not a park. We love parks. We love community spaces. Non essential turf is grass that typically only gets stepped on when someone is watering it or cutting it, like only to get maintained, like a median. And so we are really focusing on making sure that people have efficient irrigation systems in place. Those lot, large water conserva, or sorry, water users. And we do have rebates for people to not only do the assessment, but upgrade their equipment. And then we also have a turf reduction program. And we are working with people to reduce the amount of grass, that non essential turf. And so we have rebates through several different funding sources, including in part from you all as a town of Breckenridge. So thank you for that. And then, so that's kind of what we did in 2024 by the numbers. Looking ahead, we are working with the Town of Breck and the entire community on updating our water efficiency plans. So we're going to do that community wide. It's through a Bureau of Reclamation Grant that has not surprisingly been paused quite a number of times, but it hasn't been suspended. So we're still hopeful that we're going to be moving forward with that. As part of that project, we are also working with Town of Breck, with Jessie and Laura and the entire water department on making sure that Breckenridge has an individualized updated water efficiency plan. And so you all have put towards a match, towards a Bureau of Rec grant. And then in terms of other local things in, in Breck, we're working on demonstration garden with the Breck Alpine Club. And they're adding a new berm this year with low water plants, just to show people you can have like a beautiful space. It doesn't have to be completely zero escaped and a bunch of rocks like you would see in Vegas and around. So. Oh, and our final note, not related to water conservation, but we have moved and we are now on Frisco Main Street. So come by and see us anytime. It's much more accessible. It's not behind 7-Eleven anymore. And we, we own the space. So, yeah.
Congratulations.
But yeah, thank you so much for your leadership and for having us.
All right. Well, I think we're, if you have questions for them, you can email them. Because we're going to keep moving on, but it was a really thorough presentation and thank you very much. And I know we kind of poked in at times. So hopefully most of the questions got answered, or we'll just chase down Jessie. But thank you guys for all you do. Ton of work that got done this last year. It's impressive.
Thanks, Earl.
All right, we're going to move on to the financial audit presentation.
What? Oh, my jacket? It's delightful. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am here with Tracy behind us here and Jim Hinkle, who is our external auditor for the Town of Breckenridge, and he's going to give a quick report of our annual comprehensive financial report for 2024 and answer any questions.
Good evening, my name, or afternoon, my name is Jim Hinkle with Hinkle and Company CPAs, and we did perform the annual audit, excuse me, of the financial statements. We start off our work by updating our understanding of the town's internal accounting controls, those that cover payroll, cycle, disbursements, cash receipts, as well as the investment cycle. We're looking for primarily a segregation of duties. Transactions typically take three steps, the initiation, the approval and the recording in the books and records. And we do not want to see one person doing all three of those steps. We're also looking at the control features, things like approval of invoices prior to being paid, approval of the account coding within the general ledger. And we do test of controls where we select a random sample of disbursements and payroll type items to look for those control features to determine whether they are operating as intended and whether they can be relied upon. We do that for a couple of reasons. The first is that we are looking for any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal control structure. Those are terms of art for us. A significant deficiency is defined as a design flaw in the system of internal accounting controls that would allow an error to go undetected in the ordinary course of business. And a material weakness would be a significant deficiency that might result in a material misstatement to the financial statements as a whole. And based upon our analysis of the internal controls, as well as our specific testing, we did not find any significant efficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal control structure. That's the answer that you're wanting to hear. We also use that information to help us design tests of the actual financial statements. We use what we call substantive testing, which is test of details and analytic review. Test of details is pretty much what it sounds like. We drill down into account balances. We look at the underlying transactions and we compare those to supporting documents such as invoices, cash receipts, contracts, to ensure that the accounting is done in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. And then we do a lot of analytic review where we compare the current year revenues and expenses to the prior year, to budget numbers, relationships within the financial statements. And we're looking for relationships that we either don't expect or can't explain. And if we find those, we do more test of details. The end result of that is the audit opinion. Yours is what's referred to as an unmodified opinion. And in layman's term, that is a clean opinion, states that the financial statements have been prepared in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. That's also the answer that you want to hear. You did receive a couple of federal financial, or federal awards, grant awards. You've received more than seven hundred and fifty thousand in expenditures, and therefore you have to have what's called a single audit, where the external audit firm audits both the financial statements as well as compliance with federal awards. We issued two opinions with respect to the single audit. The first is referred to in conjunction with government auditing standards. And that is where we look at the town as a whole and basically ask the question, do you have the internal controls to know what federal awards you receive and what the compliance requirements are for each of those federal awards? Well, that may sound pretty easy on the surface. Sometimes federal dollars are passed through the state and other organizations, and, and it's difficult to tell how much is federal dollars versus other dollars. And then if we have any instances of non compliance in any federal award program, we're supposed to disclose that in that report. That was also an unmodified or clean opinion, that you do have the controls in place to determine the federal award programs that you participate in. The second one is, is referred to as in compliance with uniform guidance. And that's where we select specific programs and we drill down into those and we test compliance with every government compliance requirement to ensure that, that the town is complied with all aspects of that federal program. And we actually tested both the, the section fifty three eleven Transit Operations Grant as well as the Justice Center Affordable Housing Grant. And we had no findings, no question costs and no instance of non compliance with that program as well. So all in all, three audit opinions, three clean opinions and no findings and question costs. Finally, we issued management a required communication letter where we're required to communicate in writing if certain events occur, such as disagreements with management, difficulties in the audit or audit adjustments where we found errors in the books and records and required adjustments to be in compliance with general accepted accounting principles. And we had nothing negative to report in that letter. We had none of those items. So all in all, it was a good report. It was a detailed financial statement. I would like to thank both Dave, Tracy and all of the staff. We are in the early part of June. The audit report is issued along with the full ACFAR. That is relatively soon and a month earlier than a year ago. And this is a document that takes a lot of effort. And we are in addition to their daily jobs, so all the questions and documents and schedules that we ask for. You can tell when an organization places a high priority on financial reporting, we can get in, we can get out, and that's the case in Breckenridge as well. So thank you to all of the accounting department staff for their help in reaching these conclusions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Any questions?
Mr. Hinkle, question?
Did you, I think you answered this in saying that there was three clean discoveries on there, but was there anything that would have potentially been a material deficiency that you saw when going through the, the financials?
No, like I said, when we analyzed and tested the system of internal controls, the accounting policies, the procedures, how invoices are approved in advance of payment, things like that, we did not have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in those internal controls. And we did not have any audit adjustments where we found errors in the books and records that required even adjusted.
Great. Thank you very much for your time.
I was just going to ask if you would comment very briefly on your testing on debt capacity for the town. Well, we don't directly test desk debt capacity. What we're primarily testing for is that the financial statements are presented in accordance with general accepted accounting principles and that they are materially accurate. So debt capacity would be something more that the accounting department would do from their perspective as opposed to our testing. If you had some debt that had loan covenants, we would verify the compliance with those covenants, but we're not really tasked with going out and testing debt capacity directly. That's this guy's job.
He's good at it.
No more debt.
Anything else?
Any other questions? Thank you all very much. I know you guys got a lot on your plate today and, and every meeting, and I appreciate the time to come in and give a brief analysis of the audit process.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate your work with us and very much appreciate our financial department. Thank you, guys. Okay, we're moving into planning commission decisions. That was a pretty easy one. Any questions? Great. Move into legislative review. We're going to start with the developer agreement for Runway Neighborhood's second reading.
Hi, before we get staff down here to, to sort of kick this off, I do want to just give some context to you guys for the procedure that we're going to do with this tonight. So, because it's a little confusing and there's multiple elements of this project that are on the agenda tonight. So first, as you know, we're looking at the second reading of the developer agreement. We will talk about that in legislative session. I also actually have some. Have you passed those around if you want? There's been a minor change since the version that's in your packet. But we're going to talk about just the developer agreement. Right now, we will be talking about the GMP and the budget after, after we get through the legislative review, because the approval of the GMP and the budget is not actually a legislative action, but this is. So that's how we're going to do it. And I think it will be most, the best use of our time, if you can save your, I know everyone has a lot of thoughts on the GMP and the budget, but if you can save those comments and just focus on the developer agreement that we're looking at for second reading, that would be great. Does anybody have any questions about the procedure?
We're going to start off with this second reading of the developer agreement.
Yep. And really quickly, there are just a few little changes. So I think was already in your packet, which is the, if you want to look at, hold on. Page ten, section twenty six B, under termination by town for convenience. There was a sentence fragment that was where it says, "end vertical construction, phase one construction." That was not meant to be included in that paragraph. So that's been deleted. These are all minor in nature and don't affect the substance of the agreement. So just for clarification, since we are on second reading. The other one is on page seven, section twenty C. Just in addition to clarify that, so as we've talked about, that section twenty sort of addresses two different issues. One of them is when the develop, when the developer has had some issues at stables with getting through the lottery and then having applicants or having people that have gone under contract drop out right when the unit is ready to sell. And so then she has to go back through the lottery, which is not ideal and is a delay. And so the section twenty is designed to address two things. It's designed to address that and then also to address the fact if, for some reason, she cannot sell the units at, at the initial lottery and they remain vacant, it gives her some options. So just to clarify, in C, which allows her to sell the unit to a, any qualified buyer pursuant to the terms of the restrictive covenant. And just to clarify that that means at the pricing established in the budget. So not for whatever price she wants, but at the, the pricing that is set for those units. So that's a clarification there. And then finally, So that's a clarification there. And then finally, in 26E on page 11, sorry, I'm kind of jumping around. But they're in the order of the order that we made them. So that's why I'm thinking of it that way. We had, we had talked about this at the last meeting that we needed a little bit of clarification on when the planning documents would transfer to the town. And this clarifies that it is at the time of permitting. And that if the agreement is terminated, we will only be entitled to those planning documents that are for the units that have been permitted. There's a lot of reasons for that. This is a good clarification. I think it makes sense for both of us. We will also, because we have a predevelopment agreement with developer for sort of the general design documents, we will already have ownership of those documents. So this is really for the unit-specific building plans that have been permitted. Does anybody have any questions? Suzanne, does that jive with what you, your understanding of all of this? Okay, great.
Twelve phone calls with Lisa.
Keely, I just had one clarification on 20C. When it says that developer may sell such units to any qualified buyer pursuant to the terms of the restrictive covenant. I heard what you said that meant, but does that also have to abide with the deed restriction that is?
That is the restrictive covenant.
And those are, so it's not just the price set forth, but it's also?
Correct. Yes. Yep. Right. It's not, it's that they will remain. It's basically just a way for the developer to not have to wait for the housing authority to get through all of their process if they, if they've gone through the lottery and there's no other, you know, she can just go straight to someone and say, here, buy this, as long as they qualify. Right? Yeah.
Keely, could you speak to the right to cure a little bit?
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. So the one thing that we didn't do is the, we didn't include the draft deed restriction or restrictive covenant in this version of the developer agreement, partly because the transfer of property is not happening until we authorize vertical construction. And so we will be recording the covenant at that time. But as you guys know, we have not come to you with a draft deed restriction yet, so that is going to be worked out. One of the things that has come up is, you know, whether or not there's a right to cure and redeem, and what are the towns protections in the event of a default by the developer or by a future owner of the property in terms of a mortgage. So I, you know, the town and the county have actually addressed this for a number of years. And the current standard form of deed restriction has a number of protections, including there's an opportunity to cure, there's an opportunity to redeem. You can foreclose, there's a lien, there's a deed of trust, there's about five or six different ways that the town can, plus there's the underlying zoning and the other agreements that the town can utilize to its benefit in the event of a default by either the developer or a future owner. In addition, the way that this agreement is structured and the way that the project is structured, when the developer goes to get a loan from the bank to fund the rest of the development, there is a subordination agreement that we will execute. So we have not, we have not, excuse me. There's a lot of talking. I need to take a breath. We have not drafted that agreement yet, but I did take a look at the one that we did for stables. And I have a few edits to it, but that also has a cure provision. So there's, there's little chance that the town would end up, you know, we have a lot of options. And we have a lot of ways to sort of address that issue. And depending on, you know, we don't always want to cure because curing means we've given the bank money on behalf of the owner or whoever has the mortgage, right? That may not be the right move, but we have a number of different options.
Nice. I mean, after you and I talk, we have multiple options to maintain our deed restrictions.
Yes. Yep.
That's really, yeah.
Exactly. Yep. Yeah. So there are a lot of ways that we have sort of secured that, these deed restrictions. And, you know, we look at them every time we do a new one and this will be my first time looking at the towns. So it will be, it'll be fun. I'm sure there will be a few changes. But I also know, you know, between all of the local jurisdictions, the town and the counties tend to, you know, match up with each other, but there's always new things to kind of learn and put in place.
Every time.
Yep, every time. We learn something new every time.
And I appreciate some of the past councils when we, because we did lose a project, multiple units many years ago, and we wanted to be sure that we were protected.
Yeah.
They went to a celebration of life event Saturday and talked about three or four of them again.
Yeah. No, that is, it is, it's a problem that we have, I think, adequately addressed. I don't know why the phone is ringing.
It must be the alert. Same thing.
It's Silverthorn again. So, yeah, that's, I'm happy to talk more about that. I could talk about deed restrictions for a long time, but that's not what we're here for today.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Any staff want to?
I don't have anything to add. Thanks for the awesome review of the agreement. But yeah, second reading and the changes that Keely outlined between your approval at first reading and what we're presenting for second reading tonight. So I think you covered everything, but I'm here, Suzanne's here, Melanie's here, if you have any questions on the development agreement.
Thanks, Lori. More questions?
I appreciate your patience and everyone's, the staff, Keely's, and everyone as we work through this, so.
I love the public process.
You guys have anything? All right, Suzanne, did you want to say anything or you?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, I think we're ready for a second reading then tonight, right?
We just want to make sure that our motion does talk about the version that was handed out in.
Okay. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We're ready to move on to the American Tower lease renewal agreement, first reading.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here today to present the third amendment for the American Tower Corporation lease at Suite 160 next door at the Breck Professional Building. It's two four-year extensions in the third amendment, which will take the lease through January 31st, 2035. I want to thank Keely for working at length on this third amendment, so here to answer any questions.
Thanks, Dave.
Is that just equipment in that space?
It's a data center. Yep.
Any other questions? Very supportive. All right. Thanks, Dave. Fifteen intergovernmental agreement resolution.
And Mayor Owens and Town Council before you is essentially a housekeeping measure to allow, to amend the proposed, sorry, the existing nicotine intergovernmental agreement to allow for the newly formed Town of Keystone to be a party to the IGA. This does not have any financial implications with regard to the Town of Breckenridge, but certainly will have some for both Town of Keystone and Summit County, from which they were formed. So as I mentioned, sort of a housekeeping measure, hoping that all parties to the IGA approve this and we can move ahead with allowing Keystone to charge nicotine tax as outlined in the original agreement from 2019.
Got questions? Really doesn't change anything, just Keystone's in. Okay. Sounds like we're ready.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the manager's report. We're going to go into public projects update. Kristen and Shannon up?
Ladies.
If you would like, we could start with fielding any questions on the fiber updates. We have Kristen here, the project manager.
Yeah, and May is bringing up the map. So we have an overview here of where we have brought fiber in the town. And then this is all available in that link in the packet under ALO availability, except for the 2025 construction. So right here is just a main map showing the different lines that we have installed. And then the legend on the lower right corner shows which year, which color depicts which year it was constructed. And then, May, if you want to go to the third page. There you go. That one's good right there. So the magenta shows this year's construction. This is the first part that Peak is working on right now. They're on 4 o'clock road, just, just above the roundabout coming down the hill. And they're going to start working on Primrose Place and up to King's Crown. But yeah, the green lines, you'll see that's what we did last year. So we're just connecting to what we did last year. The goal is to get to Beaver Run and the Village at Breck and all of those big MDUs in the middle. They're hoping to gain a lot of customers. And then, May, go ahead. So the next one, we're doing a small line up on Highway nine at the Breck Inn. So this is going to connect from about where the 7-Eleven is up to the Breck Inn because we've had some interest from Breck Grand Vacations. So they'd like to be able to connect all of their buildings. So that is one that we weren't to yet. So happy to answer any questions. Yeah.
See, we're doing a lot of multi-unit buildings. What's the take rate on?
So a lot of times we'll have a bulk agreement with the MDUs where everyone in the MDU signs up. So like HOA would sign up for everyone.
And that, will we accomplish that on most of them?
Yep.
That's fantastic.
Great. Questions on the ALO? Thanks for the explanation and the maps. That was very helpful.
You're welcome.
All right, Shannon?
Can I add one thing to that?
Oh, yeah.
And that is in the 24th of this month, we're going to be both bringing back the ALO contract for kind of restatement and revision and restatement of that as part of the legislative item. And similar to what we're doing tonight, then we'll have a work session talking about the strategic evaluation of, you know, the entire 9600 program and what we want to look forward to and that kind of stuff. So you'll have a in-depth dive in two weeks.
Sounds great. Thank you very much.
Moving on to the other projects highlighted in the memo for today. Broken Lands Construction is ongoing. Great job. We've had some positive feedback from the residents on how the contractors are driving through the neighborhood. So that was a lot of good feedback.
You're such a realist.
And, you know, Columbine's doing great out there on overlay and concrete through the downtown core. We're hoping to get some more asphalt down here shortly. Remembering that it is still early June and we are very much ahead of where we've been in past years. Staff's getting a little anxious to get it wrapped up and we have to remind ourselves, we still have the rest of June to get the work done. I did put in a lot of updates for the Blue River Pathways project. I know there may be some questions lingering out there about some of them. I wanted to add in a lot of the projects today as a refresher of things we're working on because we will be coming back to council on a few of these, especially the signage and the sawmill connection and the corridors, the structures project through the corridors. We're going to have a big check-in with the design team at the meeting on the 24th on that project. So I'm happy to take those questions if there's still curiosity out there on any of the projects for the Blue River Pathways.
Questions on Blue River?
Shannon, I had just on the recreation path signage. It said staff and design team are working on establishing recommended locations, messaging, and graphics for low-cost signage along the rec path in the downtown corridor. And just curious, when you say low cost, is it, are we still, we're still going after a permanent wayfinding solutions with this, or is this more of a A/B test and seeing what works better? And is this a result of our field trip that we did together last year?
It is a direct result of the field trip. I'd say we're somewhere in the middle of the level of materiality we're putting in for the signs. We're going for, as we talked about a few months ago, probably a standard aluminum sign on a black metal pole. You know, very architectural like we did with the digital signs. So we're not going that far, but we're still going to have a nice quality. We're not going to, you know, be doing laminated or I don't know what low cost brings up for you.
Right. I was saying, my daughter like drawing stick figures with like slow.
Couple thousand per sign kind of situation, but we're not going to that higher end where we're spending $15,000 per sign like the new signage for the parking structure, coming up with a big P. So when I say low cost, it's sort of that typical. BTO has been super helpful. We met with them and then had some follow-up discussions on how to integrate the signage into the overall plan. And then Lucy and I followed up on how to make the signage a bit more special and kind of get that branding in, even given the more temporary or low-cost trial nature that we're doing with it.
Got it.
Does that help?
It does. And I know that in the past, we've spent, we've invested in getting, excuse me, signage packages produced. And are we, are we able to utilize those in development of these aluminum signs? Or is that more of that garage structure that that was really applicable towards?
Yeah, we did a project a few years back now where we did detail out some of those more architectural signs. And we aren't going to be utilizing that level with this project. With the rec path connectivity through the downtown being really new, we do want to try out how this signage works if we're getting it in the right places before we really do that investment and bring back new architectural level signs.
And then my last one on signage is, are we just adding signage or are we kind of making them more efficient and having less overall?
Absolutely. The second one. We've walked it a few times, found some relics that we can get rid of on areas where we can combine them and really try to streamline that. So guests know what to look at as they're coming through the town there.
Amazing. And hopefully it'll be something that keeps Jeffrey from driving on the bike path.
Oh, my gosh, there's nothing. Any other? Yeah, Todd?
I'm curious, is the rec path signage connected in with the open space and trails signage plan? Or, and if it's not yet, is that a layer that we should maybe add in? So for future rec path stuff, that it all works?
Yes. It's not exactly following the open space stuff yet, but I want it to in the future as we get more detailed.
Perfect. It's on your radar. I'm happy. Thank you.
Sounds great. Anything else on the Blue River Pathways projects?
I'd just like to comment that the Living Labs area looks really nice. It's clean, it's welcoming, open space. And are we going to get the water buggy out there?
We'll try.
Maybe.
We're having a little stumbling block with power to that because it needs to be powered. So we are trying to work through that. I was in town this weekend and those bike racks, the public ones, were full.
Yeah.
And that was great to see. But yeah, we're still working on the buggy. I can't promise it the next few weekends.
By the 4th of July, hopefully.
We're working on it.
Poker player, are you?
Not Living Lab, but the Broken Lands Weekly updates are great.
Oh, have you been a?
Very thorough, very clear. Yeah. And the one I just got also.
Interruption in your water service?
Well, now it's telling me that that interruption has now ceased and we are back in business.
All right. I'd like to welcome James Phelps, Director of Public Works, to give you an update.
Good afternoon, everyone. Maybe as a way to pick up a little bit right where HC3 left off on water conservation. I wanted to provide an update to our advanced metering infrastructure project, or known as the AMI. For those of you that are signed up to Water Smart, hopefully you received just an intro informational piece on on the project. And as this project is coming around. And as this project is coming around finally, it's been five years in the works. It actually was a project that came out of the 2015 Water Efficiency Plan. And we were all cited on putting it into motion and doing the project, but we are kind of COVID and some, some coming up short on some grant opportunities. It's been prolonged. Well, happy to report now it's, it's well on its way to getting out onto the ground. So here in the next month, we have a contractor all lined up for it and the meters are all ordered right now. We're going to start a communication in more earnest here on June 16th. And that's going to come through our contractor who's D M B Construction. And they're, they're the ones that's really charged with the communication on this. And they're going to email out to our water customers. They also have a call center in which that they're going to, you know, reach, reach out to folks. And really what they're charged with is both the installation, but also setting up the scheduling for entering into people's homes to change out the infrastructure. So really what that, what that is, is, you know, every house will need to be, every unit will need to be entered. And the contractor will come in and it won't, it should take less than, you know, somewhere around the order of 15 to 20 minutes, depending on the access to the, to the water meter and replace that. Again, the importance of this project is really, I mean, there's multiple prongs to the, to the reasons for this. One, the existing infrastructure is over 20 years old right now. So it's just, in some cases, it's not reporting, the accuracy is not there any longer for what it's reporting. So that's, that's important. The new system is going to allow for higher accuracy down to one tenth of a gallon, actually. And it's also going to allow water customers the ability to see what their daily use of water is. So it really dovetails nicely with our, our conservation initiatives and our sustainability goals and water efficiency plan that we have adopted. So that, as I mentioned, will start on June 16th. The actual installations will start on Monday, July 14th is really what we're targeted for. We're also working obviously to put all the messaging or translate all that into Spanish as well. We're also going to be working with our communication, internal communication team to make sure that we're reaching out to everyone. The goal of this project is have everything done by the end of the year. And that's pretty fairly aggressive, but the last time we did this in 20 or 2005, we were fairly successful. We had to chase a few people around into the next calendar year, but we're hoping with, that isn't the case this year. I think that's about it. We'll stop there and take any questions that the folks might have.
Questions for James?
I have one question. Is there a difference in, like, if you water at a certain time of day or night? Like, is it the same cost no matter when you water?
It is the same cost, but you need to be, be aware of what day of the week you can water. But it is.
Not incentivized until like a certain time or anything like that?
No, it is not. But what we do recommend, I mean, the kind of the adopted practices is that you should be watering in the, at nighttime and not during the daytime, obviously. So.
Okay.
But there's not any further financial incentives to, to doing, doing so.
Makes it easy.
James, one thing I noticed, and interestingly enough, it was in the financial packet, that we're down four million gallons of water usage over last year. Can you attribute that to anything in particular?
The fall field.
Maybe.
That, that certainly would be one of the areas. I think one of the things that we also went to last year, if council calls, we went to monthly billing. And that was a way to really, you know, kind of provide more education to water customers and their water consumption. So I think that there's kind of a combination of things that are taking place right now. That's probably, you know, helping that reduction in, in water usage. I think what we're going to find out of this is that we do know there's some non-revenue water out there right now. And that's really just the difference of the water we produce and the water that, that we charge for. And so this new, this new technology that we're implementing is going to have a better way to track and see if we do have any water leaks in the system. And also, also for any areas in some of the customer homes or commercials that aren't, that aren't being charged accurately.
Anything else? Thank you, guys. It's a very newsy update.
Thank you.
Bloody.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I had two small additions to the packet that aren't in there. As you all love signage, the two large international parking P signs should be going up here in the next week or so, two weeks at most. So probably by next meeting, we should have some photos of it up there. So two signs, they should look pretty cool once they're up there. Yeah.
Thanks, Matt.
You're welcome. Thank you. And then the other one, actually, before I say this one, does anybody have any questions mobility wise? It's kind of a mobility sustainability one, the next one, but.
Go ahead.
Great. So Shamrock, some of you may have heard or probably have already heard. 106 West is planning to start taking them here on Thursday, sometime later this week. They've done a lot of shuffling of the building inside and outside, and they're going to test it out, see how it goes. They've worked really hard with Shamrock on making sure their trucks are loaded properly from the warehouse to come up here so that they can offload them early in the morning, get them out and delivered before the rest of the semis and trucks start showing up. So all pretty new to all of us. I'd say kudos to 106, seeing the problem and trying to find a resolution and they are ready to go with it. So I'm pretty awesome.
It's great of them.
That's all I have.
That's starting next week, you said?
They said as soon as Thursday, but we'll, sometime in the next few days.
And that's a really, not to go too far on this, but it is just a really important piece and important step that they're taking to make this a true pilot program and to understand the case volumes and just, you know, given that the future of the, of food delivery in town is uncertain, the fact that they made those efforts is commendable. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's great feedback.
Thanks to all that's worked on that. I'm sure that wasn't just 106 West. So I appreciate all of the efforts.
I, I would say Shamrock showed up to the table and, you know, they also saw the, they wanted to be part of the program and everybody worked together. And I think this will be a pretty awesome way to keep the pilot going.
Great news. Thank you.
Amazing what some personnel change in a company like that will do.
I wasn't saying that.
They mentioned names.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, all right. So was that sustainability and mobility or? Yeah. Okay. Now we're all the way down to committee reports, I think. Right? Did I skip anything? Oh, okay, right now? All right. Any questions on committee reports? Okay, let's move on to the Breck Events Committee. John's ready for it.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I hope I got everyone's size correctly, but that was a group effort in determining that. And I have extras in the back, but we just want to, on behalf of the Breck and Recreation Department, we want to thank Council's continued support. Fifty among all the other events that we put on. And the logo on those shirts are the original logo from 25 years ago. So we're going retro to celebrate the 25th year. On the event side of things, BTO is gearing up for Pride this weekend. We're super excited for everything that's going to be entailed in that. And with this nice weather, it just has us thinking, you know, summer and, and people coming and just of all the fun things that we have coming. Any questions on the memo?
Questions on events? No, we're excited for the summer. Thanks very much, John.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Can you handle it? I couldn't.
Susan's here, but I don't believe, I think Garrison's out first. Oh, it's here.
We can do a quick, do you, we, we can do a quick break.
Interesting day. Okay, so these are the stats of the, the quarter. And just here for any, any questions. Certainly a visual guy. So you got any questions for us?
All right. We like these. Everybody likes these. I heard that a lot of that feedback. But any questions about this report?
What are priorities, like the unscheduled time, I forget how we call it, unassigned time? When the officer not actively working on a task? What are the priorities for the officers during that time?
Usually report writing. Anything that isn't part of our category of stats is considered unassigned time.
Okay.
All right. And then did we decide we would have one of these a quarter? Is that what?
Yes, ma'am.
We're going to do that. Okay, that's great. It's really cool information. Thank you very much for presenting it for us.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other questions? All set. Okay, we're going to have a five-minute break. Move on to the noxious weed management program.
All right. So we have our noxious weeds team here. I'm Kristen Brownson, Assistant Director of Public Works. F Scott Jackman, our Streets and Parks Manager. Kyle Gilmore, our Parks Assistant Manager. And then back here, we have a couple of guys from the county, Tim Beck and Ryan Cook, and then also Duke from Open Space and Trails. He's here to help out with any open space questions. So just wanted to give you all a quick update on how we manage noxious weeds here in the town. We are required to manage, sorry, required to manage them because of the Colorado Noxious Weeds Act. I need to breathe. And town code. A combination of biological, mechanical, cultural, chemical and educational efforts to protect our ecosystems. So this work is carried out by the town staff. And then we also contract with the county and they're here to help us with any questions. And then we also use certified contractors that are also local. Recently, we've been engaged in conversations with the Non-Toxic Neighborhoods Group and their approaches to promote education and health by building community awareness of the risks associated with synthetic chemicals. So after reviewing the information provided by that group, we found that our noxious weed program incorporates many of those recommendations. So we're already doing a pretty good job. That's not to say we can't do better. So we have tailored our weed management program to focus on the following techniques. That's cultural by putting native, native plantings, mulching and proper irrigation. Mechanical with mowing, weed whipping, hand pulling in the parks and around town buildings. And then biological, that's the beneficial insects and soil amendments and some of that we're doing in the cucumber gulch this summer. And then chemical is our last resort. So that includes targeted application in the right of way and open space. So I wanted to let you know that we never use glyphosate. That's like Roundup. We never use that in any of our town applications.
Thanks, man.
Yeah. So wanted to let you know, we're always learning and we're exploring other organic options to our chemical applications. Kyle today was telling me about something that he learned about this morning. And then also one of our parks operators, she has been using a combination of vinegar and water and dish soap. She's been using that on some of the plants in town or weeds. And then she also just got some orange, orange oil, right? And she's testing that out. So we love our pollinators and we're always open to suggestions for any, any way to control the noxious weeds. Because we do not like putting chemicals down. And, you know, we want to protect our staff. We want to protect the county staff, the open space staff. So we do this in a very selective manner. If we see the noxious weeds, we only spray the noxious weeds. So we really do need the support of the HOAs and the residents as we move forward to controlling noxious weeds in our town. The best way to reduce chemical use throughout the town is to take care of the weeds on your property. Because if our team does see a weed in the right of way, they'll probably spray it. So best way to opt out is to just not have any weeds around you. All right. So I wanted to let you know that in playgrounds and town parks, we're going to use every technique available to reduce the weeds without using chemicals. And also we're going to work with our communication team. We know that we haven't been the best at educating the residents about when we're spraying. I know the county puts out signs and they come through neighborhoods, but, you know, we'll reach out and put something on social media, see what else we can do. But want to let you know that we're working on that too. So we want to move forward with some test plots with organic controls. We think we'll do that in the Stillson Lot and around the ice rink and see how that goes. And then if the organic controls work, then we'll implement that in other areas of town. So with that, we have a couple of questions for council and open it up for other questions also.
All right. So questions for this team?
I was, I couldn't help but think as I was walking around during town cleanup that I'd much rather be pulling dandelions than cigarette butts. Is it possible or would it make sense to, since there's a ton of people there, to maybe incorporate pulling dandelions as part of town cleanup to help keep away from the pesticides?
Yeah, it's a great idea. James and I were just joking that we should have a summer camp where all the kids go out.
That's a great idea. John?
Maybe do both.
And we do have a weed pulling day though, don't we?
Yeah, Open Space and Trail has a weed pulling day. We included that, I think, in the community outreach section of the memo. But yeah, Open Space does have that and they go out and pull false chamomile, I think. What else?
Yeah, with the town cleanup day, I mean, we have thousands of people and there were bazillions of dandelions. So that was where my head went. Rick was asking for a big salad today. So accommodate that as well.
That's what he wanted. Can I jump in there really quickly and just mention that dandelions are not noxious weeds? So they are not, they are targeted by some of the, I'll let you all, the experts speak to this, but heavy use areas, let's say the Riverwalk Lawn as an example, we do strive to get the dandelions out of there. But they are not listed as noxious weeds. In fact, they're edible. So they're, they're more of a nuisance, let's say, than a noxious weed. They are definitely not on the list of noxious weeds per the state or.
All right. So that's the education.
Oh, goats like thistle? Have you ever thought about goats in open space? I thought I read that somewhere.
It was in the county many years ago. They're indiscriminate eaters.
Everything.
You take the good with the bad.
They can be troublesome.
But yeah, with, with dandelion controls, well, I've been asking around some of our professional experts, our contractors. And there is a product called Fiesta that's more of a iron as the main ingredient for that. So it's more on the organic level. So we are going to try out that product and not the dicamba, for which this company, it's Rocky Mountain Custom Land sites, who is on the highway. They, they do use some dicamba products to control turf grass areas with dandelions. But they also started to use this Fiesta, which is more of an organic method. So we're going to try that out. And as of now, we've. And as of now, we've not sprayed any dandelions, just to kind of wait and see where we want to go as a town here.
Is the Fiesta available commercially?
Yes.
Can you get it online?
Yes.
Cool.
And I think pulling just the yellow heads, I think, think could go a long way, but then we all know, like, they just sprout up like crazy and you kind of have to get that big rosette out and that would take a gouge out. So I'd rather not have the Riverwalk Lawn having, where somebody's out there chipping, you know, creating divots all throughout. I think it would definitely help, but they just keep shooting up. You know, it's, it's tough. But I mean, with the goats, I think maybe, I worked for the county a while with Ryan Cook and that program tried it out a while back. I don't know if you were with the county then, but, uh, it's doable, but it's not easy, um, and not very cost prohibitive.
Yeah, I bet.
So do you guys work with like Nils Lunsford to talk to them about what we do or some of those big landscaping companies about what we do and don't really want? Or it's just, they use what they use and we haven't really started that relationship yet?
So a lot of this, we're under the guidance of the state and the county, following their requirements as part of the Noxious Weed Act. We do reach out to contractors, we have been very recently, and we have in the past, try to see if we can find other alternatives. But a lot of this is dictated by the state.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, I realize that there are laws to get rid of the noxious weeds, but I'm just thinking that a lot of the public doesn't want the pesticides. And so I'm just thinking that a group like Nils Lunsford, who is so knowledgeable about plants and plant control, I would think that maybe they would know other options, but maybe there just aren't other options and that's just the fact.
Yeah, we can definitely reach out to them, for sure.
All right, more questions? I have one more. Are we doing the bees out at the golf course still?
Yes, they have three hives. I know two of them survived the winter and, um, they're looking to re-instate the other queen and her hive, so, yes.
That's great.
Did you have something, Steve?
Well, I'd just like to thank the town staff for really picking up on an issue that I raised. And I'm very hopeful, based upon everybody's, what I perceive as a level of excitement of not just going with the easy way and the chemical way that we've had in the past and thinking outside the box for the town and the county of ways to do this. I think that even the state laws point out that chemicals should only be used when necess, when absolutely necessary. And I think we're finding that maybe they're never absolutely necessary. But it's gonna take some experimentation. It's gonna take some, some work on just the residents. If residents don't want chemicals on their lawn, they need to pull their weeds. And, uh, I, I want to be sure that, that with the county folks here, that the complaint that raised this to me from my neighbors was, what I'm gonna call indiscriminate roadside spraying that wasn't as surgical as maybe it could have been. And the ability to notify the sprayer that a person is taking care of their yard and they want to opt out from those chemicals. So I personally am gonna have a couple little signs that just say, "No spray", and I guarantee there won't be weeds in that right of way. And I'm hoping that nobody sprays. So I think that's what people want. People don't want the chemicals. They don't want their dogs walking in them, bringing it into your house, on your shoes. And I'm really encouraged that, uh, everybody's taking this seriously. I'm impressed, so let's keep up the good work. And as far as the questions are concerned, I support the implementation of the test plots. Anything that you guys think is good and that's gonna help you sort out the best way to manage these weeds is a positive thing. And, uh, other program considerations, I'm linked in with the non-toxic neighborhoods and if they send me information, I'll send it on.
All right, thank you.
So thank you all.
Thanks, Steve. So is everyone good with the, um, test plots? Yeah? Okay. Anything else for the program considerations?
I think just as you guys find successes in your experimenting, and I'm super supportive of it. Really agree with what Steve's saying, it's great. Just communicate successes, because there are a lot of, you know, neighborhoods, there, there are some neighborhoods where we're kind of trying to get a grip on the, you know, some of it ourselves by, you know, taking care of our own yards. And it's always one or two that, you know, that aren't present, you know? So, but yeah, any successes, share with the public. Of non-chemical, you know, be great. But I applaud the efforts as well.
Anything else? All right, thank you guys very much. We're excited.
Good work.
I just pulled like a hundred and I came in like, uh, two hundred and seventy-five. Yeah. All right, next up, Excel Liquid Natural Gas, LNG request for site extension.
So. I'm over here today. So Julia Puster for the record, but, um, yes, so Excel Energy has approached the town asking for a request to extend the, um, existing temporary liquefied natural gas site that we have at 115 Gateway Drive, um, which is actually in Summit County jurisdiction. Um, the council approved this in October of last year, um, and it's valid until September 20th of this year. Um, they have not been able to, um, solidify a permanent site. And so they've asked for this additional one-year extension. Um, the purpose of the, um, temporary site is to address the natural gas infrastructure and supply issue, um, in the county. Um, and should an emergency arise, they would need to use, utilize this site to, um, provide additional natural gas to the area. So right now, um, the property is owned by the town and the county that they're on currently. And so both the town and the county would have to approve, um, this additional year extension. And then they would need to go through, um, the county's permitting process since they're in the county's jurisdiction, um, which they have applied for. And it's sort of pending, you know, property owner approval here also this evening. Um, and also the PUC has to approve their permit as well. Um, and there's some federal regulation where there, for a temporary site, they're only allowed to have three years, um, for a temporary site plus one additional extension. And so this is that additional extension. They had two years of the temporary site out at McCain and this past year, um, and then this additional extension, should we all approve it? And they, they get all the adequate approvals. Financially, the town's lease with them, um, gives us thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. That has not been proposed to be changed, um, with this lease. Going forward, if it was approved and, um, equity lens-wise, when we looked at this, you know, it really does, it could impact, you know, our residents if we didn't have heat provided in those emergency situations, which a lot of times is when it's extremely cold. So, you know, staff is recommending that we go forward and approve the additional year extension. It does have some additional, like I explained, steps to go through and hoops to jump through, um, with others to, to achieve that. But if the council has any other terms or anything that they wanted to, um, talk about, we can, but otherwise, um, we'll just go forward with Excel on the.
Thanks, Julia.
Yeah.
Is Blair, is there anything that you want to add or you're just here for questions?
If you guys would give me a minute, I would just want to thank you for your strong, strong partnership. Breckenridge has been a player at the table this entire time. And thank you for that, for understanding the needs of your residents. We really appreciate it. As you may or may not know, we are severely gas capacity constrained here in the mountains. Breckenridge is on what we like to call the end of the line of the eastern mountain gas system. What does that mean? You, the, it's, we have eight, nine hundred and seventy-five miles of transmission gas lines and eight compressor stations on that, those pipelines. Breckenridge is fed from the Marshall Compressor Station, so it's coming all the way from the Marshall Compressor Station up to Breckenridge. What, what does it mean when we say we're severely gas capacity constrained? When we see a drop in pressure in our system, we get concerned about losing people off of our gas system, losing their pilot lights. So February ninth of 2019, you can look at an article in the Summit Daily News, we had rolling outages in February of 2019 as a direct result of a drop in pressure in our natural gas system. And we had those rolling, rolling outages on our electric system, because when we kill people's electricity, when we pull them off of our electric, our electric system, that inherently pulls their boiler or their furnace off of that system without killing the pilot light. So we don't have to go back in and relight those pilot lights. So when we saw that drop in pressure in February of 2019, you saw about thirty-minute rolling outages throughout Summit County. So I was living on Tarm again at the time. Um, we had thirty-minute, a thirty-minute outage there and then it moved up to Breckenridge and then it moved down to Frisco. And that is what is happening in the system. So how do we solve for this? The way that we have been solving for this for the last three years, um, asking for a fourth heating season, is through the use of liquid natural gas. Um, liquid natural gas in those tanks, um, at DNR Canal right now, the old DNR Canal site. So what, what we do is there is, liquid natural gas is very high, there's a lot of energy in that, in that gas, in those tanks. Um, and so when we see a drop in pressure in the system, what we do is we take that liquid natural gas, we vaporize it, we odorize it, and then we compress it down into the natural gas system to create resiliency and redundancy in that system so that we don't have to experience those outages. That is what we are doing, that, that we are trying to prevent bringing a larger pipeline into town, another pipeline into town. So we, again, greatly appreciate your partnership and, um, open for questions.
Thanks, Blair. Questions for Julia?
When that lease is up, will that equipment that's there now go away?
Yes. Great question, and, and we have an extensive restoration, um, plan in place as well.
What are your options when the temporary period is over? It sounds like the end of this year.
We are aggressively, um, looking to site for about a ten-year facility. Um, we are in talks with both private landowners as well as, um, how to break? Summit County Government?
I, I think this is important, um, to understand that there's, um, you know what Jesse presented on either two weeks ago or maybe four weeks ago, which is they're doing a bunch of planning and we are one of those parties to that planning process. Because an infra, infrastructure like that is gonna be incredibly expensive and it's only likely to be necessary for ten years, and so.
The new pipeline.
Yeah, so that's.
Actually, I can talk a little bit to that.
Far into that though, so I think we, we shouldn't really get so far in. But I just want to say that's why staff is very supportive of this temporary site. Because that really is, what we want to do is temporarily get the community through this.
While we're electrified.
Exactly, while, while we're trying to continue to pursue other alternative energy types. So, um, any questions, any for, any other questions?
You know, um, you speak to the partnership between the town and Excel Energy and, um, it comes across at times that that partnership is, um, works sometimes in a one-way direction. And I just wanted to at least provide a, you know, an opportunity where we can look at some of the things that are, that go both ways on this and say in that, yes, you know, we are here to support Excel and we want, in order to support our residents. But even though, um, you know, we, we got some numbers on our runway project just for the horizontal of being north of two million dollars, where I feel like there's, it would be really nice to bring it up and to discuss further of how a partnership can work both ways moving forward.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, Jay, and it is a hard conversation, um, because we are, we, unfortunately, we can't quote out that, those, that infrastructure in a, in a way to Breckenridge to other, than we can to other communities. It's very regulated by the PUC, how we quote out a lot of those projects. I will go one step further and say, that is definitely a back-of-napkin, um, quote from us. We do not reserve capacity in any, in any shape or form. And that is, again, directed by the PUC. And the reason why is because it really does put our ratepayer at risk. We had over eleven thousand new requests for service. So that could be residential, commercial, or a development, um, just last month. Of those eleven thousand requests, maybe thirty will actually come to fruition. So if we were reserving capacity on our grid for all eleven thousand that came across every month, you, you can see the trouble that we would get into when it comes to serving these, these actual developments and the ones that are really coming online versus, versus the ones that, you know, were planning for it but haven't yet. So we really, again, very back-of-the-napkin, um, quote on that runway project, we really, we cancel applications after ninety days. And the reason why is because we can't guarantee the price on that. We feel that we are operating in a more uncertain time today than we were even arguably five years ago, which was, as we all know, a pretty uncertain time. But you, you know, today's pretty uncertain too, and we, we are keeping an eye on tariffs, but are transformers going to go up or are they going to go down in the next year or two? We're uncertain of that. And so until we really get that quote into the system, we are estimating high, without a doubt. Now, going back to the partnership, they are kind of two different lanes, unfortunately. I can see what we can do and we have proposed, um, our design team has proposed some ideas of how we can work with the town on restoration on some of those items to keep the price down. Traffic control is a large overhead for us. Um, if there's a way that we can work together on some of those costs, we're here at the table trying, we want to work with you guys on all of these affordable housing neighborhoods. I mean, one, we know the need that the community has and then we know that we see the return on that, without a doubt, you know? So, um, I think that we can be somewhat creative, but they are somewhat different conversations.
Understood, I appreciate the remarks.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so, um, the staff recommendation is to approve the LNG agreement for the additional year. Everybody okay with that?
I support the extension. I think it's part of the partnership that we hope to have and, anything to avoid for even another year. Having a crisis about the gas service is a good thing.
May I add one, just one thing, just, um, it, it's not, we don't have it there necessarily for an emergency. It is more for, we, we design for negative temperatures. So when we talk about climate change at, at our organization, we believe that the highs are going to be higher, but the lows are going to be lower as well. And so when we're designing for this, we are designing for about a two-day period of, of negative temperatures. Um, which, you know, a lot of people are like, are we gonna hit it anymore? But we really do believe that there are some low lows that we're going to experience. Sorry for interrupting.
All right, any other comments, support?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Blair.
Thank you again.
Okay, planning matters. Runway neighborhood, phase one horizontal infrastructure budget.
Alrighty, so we're here to talk about the infrastructure budget for the runway neighborhood. We, this will look a little bit different than the budgets we've looked at in the past with you guys. After Shannon and I reviewed some of the bids supplied by the developer, we've made a couple of tweaks to the overall budget from those previous bids. Those include mostly focused on owner contingency, and then creating allowances within the budget. Owner contingency, and, and I can let Shannon speak more to this as well, but it's pretty much a best practice that's seen in infrastructure budgets, but then also in engineering budget specifically. It protects us as the town from unexpected costs, so we kind of want to carry in there. It's about ten percent, I think that that's on the lower end of what is usually carried for those. But that protects us from just different unexpected costs that could come our way. And then we moved a couple of items to allowances. Specifically, Excel landscaping and then over excavation. So right now, over excavation is look, being looked at with exploratory tests for actual pit tests on site. So lot-specific put, uh, lot-specific pit testing. So we'll have a better idea what lots might need to be overexed, ones that don't, and kind of averaging that out before we go forward with the GMP. I think Excel is an allowance, I think we kind of just nailed that one down a little bit. And that's, that's kind of what we worked with Blair on. We do hope to see different efficiencies, some of the things we are looking at, she mentioned. But there'd be no reason why we wouldn't have our contractors doing some traffic control, or if they rip into Floridora, that really should be, you know, our contractors working through that. It's a lot more efficient to do it that way, as opposed to having Excel pick up that cost as their overall number. So, we're hoping that comes in better, and then we also chose to look at landscaping. That is more or less, if we choose to move forward with phase two or not, we can kind of alter that park that sits in the middle, just kind of looking at what do we want to do as we move forward? Is there a phase two? So we have a good number in there for that, but we wanted to look at that as an allowance. That's beneficial to us because that, none of those allowances are subject to the seventy-thirty split. Any savings comes back to the town directly.
Any questions regarding?
Those items?
Those items, the allowance of contingency, I can speak to the way the budget was prepared as far as the items, but we wanted to cover any of those contract items with contingency and allowances if there was council questions.
The, any results from the soils testing or the pits or anything yet?
Not yet, they just started, I think last Monday, so they'll, they'll give us a full report. So, we have a contractor doing the digs, and then we have a geotech doing the testing of each bit. Correct. It did say it was a ten-foot overex on the whole site, so that's what the budget allowance of two-point-three, three, is four, so that's assuming, okay, the whole site has to be all ten feet overex.
And I understand that the soils company or whatever the company is, that, that they will actually write the, the specs for how much over excavation has to happen, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, it's not subjective at all, it's, it's really just data-driven and they do that for us, okay?
Correct.
I'm assuming that, that, that this allowance wouldn't be part of the four percent, right? Or would it, or, I mean, as savings, it's, it's at the max price now. I didn't mean the four percent, I meant the seventy-thirty.
Correct, so.
If that goes down, it's, it, you know, that would be, that's not part of the seventy-thirty share.
Absolutely, that, any savings, whatever that number actually comes in at, is what would be pushed through the draws, and that's what we would pay. Anything else would just not be charged out, so we would never realize that cost, but it wouldn't be looked at as a savings line item. So when we reconcile at the end of, towards the end of the project, those three items, those would be removed from the way we'd look at that seventy-thirty split.
Thank you.
So that's like six mil, right? Cause you've got the Excel, the earthwork, the overex, and then landscaping, just to make sure I'm understanding that right, right?
Correct.
Awesome, thanks.
Anything else on this part?
Perfect, so I teamed up with the housing staff to review the proposal submitted to the developer from the earthwork contractors, to help establish this budget. Mallion and I, Melanie and I rolled some of it up to present something that was a little bit more understandable to the council. So we grouped some of Suzanne's things into combined line items. I'm going to run through the table quick if you guys won't let me do that.
That's great.
Top is design, that's very typical. There needs to be some work to complete the construction drawings, there has to be surveying, we have to do subdivision mapping. So that's a pretty standard item that we would carry. Construction administration is something we probably wouldn't see in a regular town budget, because that's what town staff does. Ever see feedback that that number looks high, but I think it's very appropriately budgeted for the amount of staff we need out there. Project management is probably about three people full-time for three and a half years. This isn't.
Two and a half years?
Three and a half.
Three and a half.
This isn't an easy build, this land is not great to build in. We're working against, you know, Excel high-pressure gas lines, we have old sewer lines out there. So it really does need a fair amount of oversight. So in lieu of town staff doing it, because this isn't a town project, we need to hire staff out there. So that's that. You know, another thing we would never show in a town project is bookkeeping, that sort of administration. We do that as project managers, and then we have our finance staff to take care of all of that. And then the construction administration for the engineering and geotech, that is something we pay out on town projects. We pay a third-party geotechnical to do inspections on compaction and all sorts of other things, as well as having the engineers come in and do inspections that we're building upon the plans. The engineers' inspections are just once in a while, they're not full-time out there. But there's times when we do pull those design engineers to the field, so that covers that line item.
Shannon, if the town wasn't doing this, but from your experience in hiring out, would you typically see project management in a developer fee? Or is it usually separated out like we're seeing here?
I think there's many different ways to bake the cake. I think in some circumstances, I've never entered into a developer agreement with, for the town, but you could put it under that, or you could put it as a separate item. Given the very low developer fee that negotiated, I think it's good to show it here in the infrastructure project.
Speak, if you will, to the timeline, the three-and-a-half-year timeline for the horizontal infrastructure, and kind of, I guess what's driving that length of time, and what do you see kind of happening year one, two, three?
I don't know if I can speak that detailed on schedule. Do you want to take a stab, or?
High-level, super cool, I just kind of try to understand.
In August and go till we start going vertical. And you know, a lot of that infrastructure carries along with some of the vertical. You know, they're still out there at Stables now, and we've had people living there, or.
So what, what are they doing at Stables right now? Like what part of that?
Finishing the road.
Okay.
Finishing the irrigation, I don't think the sidewalks have come, we haven't done streetlights, we haven't done the rec path or the other sidewalk.
That's helpful.
So it's hit deep utilities like this summer. Hit deep utilities this summer then, and.
Yep. So we can get winter shutdown, get going again next, and I'm speaking broad.
Yeah, yeah.
Not all this has been detailed out, but, yep.
And then kind of year two, three ends up being finishing roads, finishing curbs, sidewalks, and that sort of thing.
Yep. It's a, it's a big project, it can't get completed in one season.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. So thank you for the high-level view there. Do you think that project management load is higher with that deep utilities with the high-pressure gas, and then lightens when you're in kind of doing the finish work?
Not necessarily, sometimes the easier things, that last five percent takes the most effort from a management perspective. But I think overall, the complexity with the high-pressure gas line and all of that would speak to the number of staff you need out there. Coordinating with all those utility providers, coordinating with, you know, water and sewer, coordinating with the town on pay apps. A lot of on-site as well as admin duties for those project managers and staff.
What sort of loading do you expect from the deep utility companies on management? Like, we've got, you know, that's, in addition to the developer fee, there's two point, almost two-point-one billion dollars in construction admin, what would you expect? What sort of management are the, you know, basically the folks doing the storm sewer, the earthwork, aloe?
You like what, the general contractors?
What sort of management you think, what sort of admin, construction management? Trying to understand, kind of, there's, there's what I see here in the budget as far as admin, but what do they bring into the table on admin?
Who's they, the general?
All the subs.
Very little. I mean, they, they say, we built this, pay us, and that's about all they provide. The construction management staff really does almost all of the coordination between all the other subs and the utilities. Okay, any other questions on that part of the budget? Okay, then we go into what's generally categorized as general conditions in a construction budget. So those are your offices, your sanitary facilities, cell phones, printer paper, internet. All those sort of things are lumped under that five-seventy-five. And big.
Sorry, how much space is required for those temp offices, like is that?
It's up to the contractor what they like, some of them like to do big trailers, and they have meetings in there and tables and set everything up.
Yeah.
Some of them like to work more independently in small trailers. So it's really up to what those folks like for their working conditions.
Given Stables, which maybe gives some insight as it did to the last question that Kelly jumped in on. Is that like one or two trailers, you think, or ten, or?
I think they have one at Stables.
Okay.
Parking garage, I had two and a half.
Okay.
They all liked to be in there. During COVID.
It's in warm.
During COVID.
Thanks.
No problem, and then you have insurance and bonding, that's very typical. And that bonding rate, insurance rate can vary wildly depending on the contractor, their relationship with their sureties, what the developer needs to cover. So, it's really hard to say that number's within the range we see, but I've seen it anywhere from seven and a half to twenty percent, depending on the project, so we're comfortable with that. The next block there is, you know, the meat and potatoes of the project, it's the water lines, the sewer lines, all of the grading, all the typical, what people call hard costs on the project. As stated in the memo, multiple bids, where multiple proposals were solicited. So we feel really confident that these are good numbers, they're competitive, and they fall in line, if not slightly, under some of the pricing we've had on other public projects. And the construction contingency is something, is very typical for this size project, the way we are structuring the contract. We got this pricing ahead of final construction documents being done, so there will be changes to this construction set after this budget presentation. Hopefully we can capture most of them in the GMP, but there will still be things that are missed. Good example of that, that we had on Broken Lands was when the sand district came back with their final review. We added hundred thousand dollars in extra insulation to some lines as requested by them. So you want to have some budget in there for those little changes, because we know this is a big project and those things come up on, on every project. So I always like to assume that the construction contingency will be spent. And it's only four and a half percent, which is again on the low side. And you'll see there the developer fee applied, I believe, consistent with the developer agreement. And then we added in her council's understanding additional owner costs to the town. These aren't part of the construction contract that we'll enter with the developer, but they are bu, budget items that we have to account for in our spending authority.
Shannon, can I ask you just, what, sorry, I'm going back to, what does the aloe for fifty thousand, what does that get us?
I believe that's contemplated to be conduit. And when we're in a.
Deep when it's all ripped up already.
That's what we're hoping. And you can see by how nice and round that number is, it's a preliminary number, subject to change with construction contingency.
Okay, thanks.
Well, yeah, we spent a lot of time looking at this. They're not finalized yet, but I think it's in a good, realistic place as far as costing goes. Are there questions on those lines?
Questions on this part, Jay?
I hate to go backwards, but when it comes to admin, and, you know, I get the three-and-a-half years, and I think when you look at the project management of the two-point-one, and then developer fee of seven hundred, you know, we're just south of three million dollars. What is happening in the non-building season when people aren't on the ground from Monday through Friday, from eight AM to five PM, you know, answering questions and problem-solving? If, if that's happening from May to September, October, what, what happens on the, the backside of that year with all of that oversight and all of that project management and the bookkeepers and all that?
I can't speak personally to what they're doing. But I mean, you have to have staff year-round to start. It's not like you're going to get a project manager for three months, that's not how that level of, you know, professional would hire on. So there's that, and there's plenty of work to do over the winter. You're doing your stormwater permit updates, you're still doing inspections, you're probably planning with Excel, that's the only time you're gonna be able to do a lot of the pre-planning work with the utility companies. So there is a lot of work that goes on.
Even though, yeah.
And it's, go ahead.
Suzanne, I might pass you the mic. But we, at Stables, there was never stop. I assume this team also wants to work through the winter, that's part of the, kind of what they're getting into. So I envision whoever the contractor is working through the winter similar to they did at Stables. So they're, I, I don't really foresee a major downtime, do that.
Was, uh, last win, last summer, extended into December out there. And then, you know, they've been working since April onsite again. And, and during the winter, they were helping with, you know, removal of snow, all kinds of other stuff that's extraneous to actual excavation and putting in water lines and stuff like that. But, yeah, they were, they were out there, you know, longer than you would normally expect them to be, so.
So if your contractor is working, you're going to need that project management piece out there as well. Cause you were asking about what that, those project managers do. It's up on billings, that sort of thing, we usually get our last CIP billings from Columbine in December.
And then away from, if this is inappropriate, we can do this at a different time, but away from the GMP, just curious about, does, is our unit mix based on the horizontal that goes in? Meaning, are we tied to anything with what we're approving here as far as unit mix? anything with what we're approving here as far as unit mix, um, ADUs, things like that?
There's some variability. I mean, our hardest ones would be i- if we wanted to put a set of townhomes where there's a single family home, but that wouldn't work from a site planning perspective and, and it wouldn't exactly agree with master plan either. Um, where we could see different efficiencies is if we wanna convert potentially a single family home with an ADU to a cottage to, or, um, you know, play with the duplex mix. I think that's where we'd have more success. Um, the, the townhome configurations will make that more, a little bit more challenging, but kind of as Shannon talked about of the phasing of the infrastructure. We should be in a place as we're looking at vertical and doing these check-ins that we kind of know ahead of time. However, many phases of construction are within that phase one, whether that's three or four. We're kind of getting an idea months in advance from the vertical check-ins, what we're looking to do on the backend.
So add, adding or subtracting bathrooms, or if we decided to ADUs on all of the single families, it wouldn't affect the horizontal?
Dairy with bathrooms and things like that, but not, nothing too significant.
Maybe you'd have to alter a water tap at the worst or your sewer tap.
Any other questions? Todd, you have something?
Just want to clarify, thank you. Um, that construction management to admin piece there, that's purely for the horizontal piece. So that doesn't cover any vertical and that's only horizontal.
That's my understanding. This contract is strictly for the infrastructure work.
Then on the, I guess, one follow-up question, thank you. On the temp offices, is that us, is that the contractor renting those? Is it? Do you buy them? Like, what do we have out at the stables?
Stables is a rental.
What does that cost ballpark per month?
So this line item got compressed.
Just get a, hold on, just, I'm sorry, Suzanne. That line item got compressed. There were a lot of things that they pulled together and I pulled together, but they've eliminated from the line there. So we have, obviously, we have a bookkeeper. She's in-house. So we're, we're charging a little bit of money for, you know, office space. And then there's obviously the construction trailers onsite. There's project management software. I mean, we're, we're kind of upgrading everything for this project because uh, we've been asked to do updates and stuff to everybody. I think twice a month or something. I can't remember, or once a month. So we're gonna have some really great reporting that we can give you guys and it'll be really easy to spit it out, cause we'll have put it in. And I'm blanking on other things, but there are a number of items that aren't listed on this that are included in that number. I think that trailer is costing us four or five grand a month for the trailer itself. And then there's power, internet, you know, those kinds of things as well.
Cool, thanks.
It's security is one of the items that was, was also in there considering. Yeah, just with the unknown of phase two and what's going on over there.
All right, any other questions? Okay, so we just need a thumbs up or?
Yeah, what we'd like you guys to do tonight is, um, to give a thumbs up as to the budget. Um, and then authorize staff to go forward and enter into the GMP agreement and you have a sample of that in your packet, so you can see what that would look like, which would not exceed the budget. Does that make sense and sound okay to you guys?
People ready to do that?
Well, before we do that, I wanted just to float something and see if there was broad support or not of a third-party financial review, maybe fifty percent through the infrastructure project and then at a hundred percent just of someone that is not related to developer or staff or us just coming in and doing a financial review, just in a way that we can be rest assured that we're doing our fiduciary responsibility to our residents and to the taxpayers. And, um, you know, I would let staff kind of lead that if that was something that was of desire, but just kind of wanted to brush that topic just to I think the, the part, at least in my mind, the, the heartache and the heartburn that comes from this is, are we doing enough to look out for the fiduciary responsibility? Are we doing our job? And, um, you know, I think we could question project management, uh, costs and trailer costs all day long, but I think it would be really advantageous to say that we had someone that had knowledge, experience, and, um, the, the know-how to, to do a review maybe halfway through the project and then a hundred percent away, uh, through this uh, to provide a, a third-party report.
Like a, like a, um, mini audit kind of thing, Jay?
Yes.
So an accounting firm, a one hundred percent independent accounting firm? Or something of that.
I, I would, I would defer to staff to kind of decide what was appropriate, but just wanted to see if that was of of, of an extra layer that would be, there would be an expense to it. But would it be something that, um, others would feel like that would be providing a benefit to the project?
I'm just wondering with that approach, what do you see as the, um, added review? Because clearly, from what I understand with the, what we have built in with the draws, with the monthly, bi-monthly financial updates, what do you think this added staff would contribute on top of what we have built in?
No, and that's a great question. I think that I kind of thought through that as well. It is more if things were to go, to go wrong for some reason, that we did everything in our power to provide, uh, to do our job of providing that fiduciary responsibility and that is by having a fully independent, um, set of eyes on that. That is not tied into the day-to-day. They're not, uh, looped in. It's just a kind of an opening the book and looking at it from a very, uh, agnostic standpoint.
But do you, so in trying, kind of hearing what Carol said, are you really wanting a backup set of eyes, like an audit? Or are you actually wanting someone to look at like financials before? Cause it's like after we've already committed to, you know, an, an amount of money. So I'm just curious if it would make more sense if we were gonna do something like that, if it was like before you commit to the money. And maybe for horizontal, it doesn't. We don't do that, um, but then maybe for vertical. I'm just trying to think of same as Carol, what the benefit is and if it'd be more beneficial if it was before we committed all the money.
I like where you're going with that. I can see, I see both tracks there and I think on the front end, like to me, the question and, you know, staff is clearly, you know, staff are the experts on these details and obviously the, the developers as well, but in my mind, it's like, how do we do five percent better here, right? Do you, do you buy a, a construction trailer now for the stables that then gets sold for runway and, and does that? Is there, how do we do five percent better? I think to me is ultimately the question, cause that as I look over three, four, or five years, that's the goal. Cause that, that can add up. Is there, you know, we've got a new model here with the developer. Kind of the, the, the way we've structured this is it, it's a newer model to how we're used to doing business. So there's learning to be done there. You know, in my mind, I'm hopeful that we can find five percent, right? Like make sure staff isn't overburdened, make sure there's appropriate project management, make sure the developer's thrilled and has contingency. And then, yeah, do we find another five percent that helps X number of, of locals into more housing? That to me, on the front end, could be, if we start with the infrastructure piece, have a review, try and, hey, how do we, how do we tackle this project a little differently to again, make sure everybody's whole, but also do a little bit better. And then ultimately in the long run, I think that saves us more money and helps more locals with housing.
Is that something that Todd Golding already did kind of with the fit test?
To, to an extent, I mean, I think the concern is this could go up five percent should we delay the project. So this is a delay that we're gonna see as we analyze this. There is five percent within this, um, the, between the contingencies, the allowances, the things that we're already trying to get better numbers on, um, that I think in, in, you know, our conversations. It's, I, I think it'd be, I understand the audit as well. Um, I think it's a struggle, right? Because what we're asking is we're asking somebody to come in halfway through who has no construction knowledge to audit books. I I don't see how that works. I don't see how somebody can read a draw and understand what was happening month, you know, draws one through eight and audit it. It, it's essentially that, that kind of happens with the draws. Um, if the numbers don't equal, we, we can't pay them. So I guess, I I think this is probably, I think we both feel confident, all of us, that this is is probably the best that we're going to do, um, within the budget. And then from there, trying to get that GMP lower is, is the main goal.
And I want to add that staff is always trying to find that five percent. You know, can we change this sidewalk or? What can we, I'm, I'm looking at deleting storm inlets, for example. I'm like, why are there so many storm inlets? Can we trim some of those back? Cause we know on public projects, it's taxpayer dollars, we want to be as efficient as we can. And I think we are. I think that's built in to the way we look at projects. Um, at least I can speak from infrastructure perspective.
Yeah, and I'm su- super appreciative, you're, you know, the three years sitting up here, your style has always been no surprises with budget. You know, that's certainly really appreciated and, yeah, so thank you for the review on it. I just, yeah, as I'm looking at the whole project, I think about, hey, do we start with the horizontal infrastructure of, hey, let's let's beat this up again and find five percent and then do that throughout the whole hundred and
If you want to cut the project down, that's the only way I could say, yes, we can. We would have to do ninety-five percent of the project.
But isn't the construction trailer example one that maybe fits, right?
Well, how do we take it from the site in July when it's needed?
I mean, that'd probably be an upfront cost to purchase it and then gamble that we're gonna resell it. I, I get the spirit of it, but I don't think we're gonna save money on buying a trailer or GCs would buy trailers, you know? We went through an awful experience buying the office, the trailer at the e-delivery. And I wouldn't force anyone to repeat that. Stakeback. We get what you're saying. And absolutely, we don't want to blow that owner's contingency. We don't want to, we want to have a shared savings. I mean, there's, that incentive's built in for the developer to save as well. If they find savings, they get money back, which is a super effective incentive in my opinion.
Yeah, good.
And that, I will say, if, that's a big one. If, if this moves faster, right? It's, right now, it's like forty-two months, I think, we calmed. So every month that cuts off, that cuts off rental, um, sanitary facilities, internet, all of the above. So every month that we, this project comes in a little bit faster, um, we get those efficiencies.
We want to beat this budget, but we want to give you a real budget.
Can I make a suggestion? Just, just a note. So in terms of having, cause I think I'm hearing at least a couple of you saying that you want you might want more oversight or out, you might want more outside, a different outside opinion for vertical versus horizontal. And you absolutely will have the opportunity to still do that, right? If we, if you're sending that message to staff now, that's something that can be wrapped into vertical, right?
But I think we may want to have a say in what are the qualifications.
Yeah, oh yeah, no, I
We were just handed Todd's letter and
Yeah. You have, I mean, you, that can be, um, something that gets talked about as you, as this project moves forward into, into vertical planning. Which is gonna start, I mean, if you, if you go forward tonight, you'll start, we'll start having, yeah, in July, we'll start talking about vertical. So.
And I think if we do want that type of third party, I think the challenge is, is, is we can't really get that person on two weeks in advance of council, um, or it's not, it's not really seeing the project. We've gotta, we've gotta get them inundated. Um, and that's, that's kind of the challenge. That's, that's why I ended up picking, um, Todd Golding was because you can't really just cherry pick someone that is out of Denver. It's, you know, you know, you need to know the solest conditions, the pricing, the, the way in which Breckenridge and Summit County as a whole kind of works and operates, uh, to, to take another look at this.
I mean, against Todd, I just, you know, I'd like to at least have a discussion about what kind of qualifications and everything else, so. But it, yeah, that might make sense to, so I think we're all just looking for just, just, this is a big project, a lot of money and you know, we're all responsible for that money, but we don't have the expertise, right? So we're just looking to, to, to get as much help and to be as responsible as we possibly can with the money.
And, and we hear that, maybe we can
That's where I think this is
We can think about it and give some suggestions on how that could be structured. If there's something affect, a model that's effective out there that we could
Yeah. Jay, I, I'd like a little bit where you're going. I, maybe we do that on stables when it's finished. You know, so, cause that'll really help inform us. You know, as we're going into, I mean, that was starting to happen before phase one vertical, but it should happen by phase two, you know, horizontal and vertical. So I, you know, I really do think, and I mentioned this to, to Shannon Haynes and you know, I look forward to doing a real deep dive analysis of all the numbers in stables, the in-kind, everything and really dive into that project, cause that helps inform, that's how you learn. You know, and that's how you do a better job going forward, so. So I look forward to that. I almost, I mean, I wonder if that might not be more helpful. I don't know. But I, I'm intrigued with where you're going. I'm just not seeing how it's gonna work on the horizontal right now with the nature of the, of the contract. But definitely want to do it on stables so that we can, you know, just
We were going and where did we end up, sort of thing? I'll, I'll look back at, a look back at budgeting versus final product and
Back at everything. So look at all the financials involved with stables. You know, have, have, have finance tell us and, you know, confirm that here's all the money associated to stables that went out, you know, and then, you know, categorize it and see, you know, how that project went. That's how you learn.
Budget summary report? Does that sound?
Yeah, but a very detailed one.
Detailed budget summary report.
Very, very detailed financial reporting on that.
I hear what you're saying. I, I understand the spirit of it.
Verified with finance to make sure we have everything in there.
And I mean, that's part of the great thing about our audit that the finance team does. I've been on a project that gets audited by our auditors. It's very in-depth.
Okay, so knowing, um, Shannon, you know, has said that they'll talk about what that could look like, knowing that that's something that staff will continue to discuss for the future phases or future decisions that we'll be making. How are people feeling about the infrastructure proposal?
I think, um, you know, knowing that this is been put out and presented as a worst-case scenario or highest, um, possible place, whether it's from Excel or the, if we had to over X every single of the eighty-one lots, um, and that that this is a, uh, a, a starting point for, as a worst-case scenario and that we're gonna be drilling down. I, I look forward to seeing the infrastructure start and I'd be in favor of it.
Yes, I agree. And I think we all want to be as diligent as we can with the budget. I think as we have our next conversations about vertical construction, unit size, unit type, I think, um, that'll be another opportunity. So, but thanks for your work on this.
Alright.
I'm in agreement.
I'm hopeful that we can find five percent throughout the projects. I'm hopeful that we can find five percent throughout the projects, so I'm not quite there yet. And thank you for the hard work so far.
I have a lot of trust in our two experts at the table here. And I think they know what they're doing and what we want them to do. And I believe that we're ready to move forward and not delay any further on this project.
Well, let's see, same. Okay, so you have what you need? Keely?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Real team effort. My understanding is that we actually do have, um, a bit of a.
A very quick, if I could just add a very quick, um, five-minute executive session to just talk about some litigation that we've just received notice of and to give a little legal advice. Under twenty-four six four oh two four B. If I can get a motion under that to discuss, um, litigation that's just been filed and receive legal advice.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
I.
Are we good to go? Okay. All right, so we had a quick executive session to get advice from our attorney. There were no decisions made. We are going to just do a quick bit of reported the mayor and council members so that we can, um, stay on schedule. Cast MMC, uh.
What's that?
Did you go down?
I did. Yes, um. Let me see here. We got a great report on the World Cup at Copper for, for the first, you know, quite a bit. Um, that's super exciting. I guess it's men's and women's. This is the first time women, uh, the Women's World Cup has been hosted here in, in a long, in a while. So it, it's the only full-length, the Copper's got the only full-length downhill training early season, um, in the nation. So it's, everybody's super excited. It's Thanksgiving weekend. And they're gonna do, you know, their two eastern mountains and, you know, that western one, they'll let, stay open for the public. They, they acknowledge that, uh, this could be a real opportunity for us. I was gonna mention something to Lucy, but, you know, their required lodging, they don't have enough. In, 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 you know, before you even count all the spectators and everything, so. So, you know, there's, there's gonna be a lot of lodging spread all over the county. So there's an opportunity, if we want to make an investment in the way of shuttles or something, you know? I was gonna just mention it to Lucy and if she thinks it's worthwhile, then I'm sure she'll come back to us and talk about it. But, um, super exciting. And. You know, this, th- there's gonna be a ton of press as well, because, you know, this is the first qualifying for the Olympics. So nobody's setting it out. And, and the press is gonna be here, because all the racers will be here, you know, because this Olympic year, you know? And, and so, you know, they say in Olympic years, they, you know, the racers try to make all the events, you know, to be sure they qualify. So we're gonna have a ton of press, um, here in Summit County. So let's just hope for snow. Then we went on to talk about nicotine tax and the shortfall. You know, they're, they're anticipating, you know, a thirty percent shortfall. So they've reduced, uh, they, they, um, a committee was formed to, to advise the group. And, um, y- you know, there's part one and part two of the spending and a part three, but part one, part two, part three of a, of spending from the nicotine tax. Part one is cessation, um, um, programs and, and there's quite a, quite a bit there. And they're, they're suggesting that we cut that by twenty, I think twenty-four percent. Part two is support of our key nonprofits of our, um, of FERC and Building Hope. And then part three is tuition assistance, um, stuff. So, um, we, we, we don't have enough. They, the committee initially was recommending cutting part two completely. And the group, I think, has rethought that and we're not gonna do that, because those organizations are so important. So, um, that's still a work in progress and they're looking at it. But, uh, it's, um, it's being worked on. I think it's headed, I think in the direction that, that we want it to go is talking to Shannon and I think Kelly, so a little bit, I think. I think that is the direction that we hope it'll go, is we're gonna have to cut back, right? So, but we don't want to, we don't want to remove all that funding from the part two for those, those critical and, um, nonprofits. Talked a little about the, there is a emergency management, with some hoopla around that with, uh, the SO and, um, that, that, I'm sure that'll work itself out. The mountain, um, let's see. Landfill, but they, they really, the rest was just kind of reporting out. That was the meat of it. Their longest discussions were about the World Cup at Copper and the, uh, and, you know, how are we gonna handle the, the nicotine tax shortfall? So, very interesting. It's a good group. I mean, they really do work well together, I was impressed. It's the first time I've been to one, so. Thanks for inviting me, sending me. And I don't have Shannon here to help fill in the gaps.
You know, I rely on her. You did a great job.
But no, that was, it was good. It was a great meeting.
Okay, thank you. Um, open space?
Uh, meeting on Monday.
Tourism office.
Uh, we did have a meeting. Um, talked some about, you know, what's coming. International looks to be down, um, for this summer, five percent. Ki- Canada's down twenty percent, shocker. Domestics down about four percent. You know, interestingly, Memorial Day, we had record numbers through the tunnel. So I, I think anecdotally, I heard people did pretty well, business community over Memorial, but we'll, we'll see when the numbers come in. Let's see, we've got about fifty percent of the lodging in Summit County. I thought that was a good number. July, right now, still tracking down double digits, but it's getting better. It's picking up, but we're still, July's not looking great.
What's it at, Paul? Is it like ten, twelve or eighteen, nineteen percent down?
What, what, say that again?
You said it's down double digits.
Double digits. She didn't say specifically.
Thanks.
I think it's changing fairly quickly, so.
Good.
Lucy's really pushing hard to get money into the market and really influence this, this recovery by summer. And pushing John, you know, her marketing person very hard and, you know, to, uh, you know, to, to act now, because the clock's ticking. I mean, you know, we, we're almost out of time to really put money into the market and really affect this summer. So she's, she's really working hard. Talked some. You know, just some about of our, our brand, fun, friendly, casual, you know, authenticity. You know, talking about some of our sustainability stuff and how important it is to, uh, to not be telling all of our guests what to do all the time. And, you know, we talked a little about the water bottles, they said, but that's kind of the easiest, because with all the microplastic stuff in the, in the press, it's, uh, you know, that one, that, that one, that's kind of an easy, easy sell, so. But just, just really being aware of sensitivities and of, of, you know, the polarization sensitivities of, of our, um, market, or, you know, of our, the people that we're trying to attract to come here. That's really, that was the gist of it, I think. Yeah. Let me get it.
Um, Todd, Breck history?
Yeah, no meeting, but a quick little update, some great news that the Barney Ford Museum got accepted into the Network to Freedom program.
Yeah, that's cool.
Yeah, super cool, run by the National Park Service. And it specifically honors sites and people affiliated with the Underground Railroad, which is pretty amazing. It's one of two sites here in Colorado. And Larissa thinks it might come with some future grant opportunities, so that's amazing. And then one other update, they're working on some creative solutions to the Welcome Center. You know, the full cost of the remodel over there would be like two point five million. They're working with the Snow Sports Museum, which is headquartered in Vail to host an exhibition, um, starting in November. Maybe that times nicely with the World Cup. And then, um, yeah, that's gonna honor the fortieth anniversary of snowboarding in Breck. And then other some, other temp exhibits. Uh, they've got, uh, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the US and the hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of Colorado in twenty-twenty-six. So they're planning on looking at those to have a good showing.
Great. That just sounds cool.
Lucy talked about that a little bit, uh, those committees.
Nice.
That'd be deal.
That's great. Um, okay, Breck Creative Arts, Steve?
We have the board retreat on the nineteenth. Breck Create facilitated the town party. Tents were all up. Riverwalk Center was open and despite the heavy downpour of rain, uh, it was well attended, I thought.
Rigid temperatures.
Um, Steve, I got a lot of feedback from community members, how loud town party was. So I don't know, we give that feedback back to the BCA or where that feedback goes.
So at Events Committee, they were, the, the band was given the instruction to plan that everyone was going to be outside. And so they needed to project. And then that instruction, I don't think was updated.
Can't you just turn the speakers down?
I try, I gave that message to lots of events folks that I saw in there, but seemed to be a mystery. But they were specifically told, everyone's gonna be outside, so.
Yeah.
Turn it up. Why it couldn't have been immediately brought down, I'm unclear, but that was, that was the, they, they were following the instructions.
They have PA speakers outside when it was a inhaled event.
Yeah, there was an explanation about that and I didn't have Shannon at the meeting with me, so I can't remember what that actually.
Who can know?
That might be something to bring up, Steve, at the meeting, that, that came up, if you have a moment for BCA, is, uh, yeah, because that just ruins the experience inside.
Yeah, it was tough.
Play loud enough to project outside.
Well, I got there just a little bit before it started and they were doing sound checks when it was not raining.
Yeah.
And everybody pretty much was outside. And so then they all went away. All the people inside went away. And I'm guessing they didn't change what they set.
Yeah.
When they set it up before the rain started. But, yeah, I'll talk to Cameron, see what they say about who was kind of in charge of that or how that worked, but.
It was fun.
I think it was a really fun event.
And.
Love it.
And I would say Todd and I both chatted with a young woman who's putting on the farmer's market and she's really excited about that opportunity and was happy to meet some people and. Yeah, Nicole, so that's coming up, the nineteenth, maybe also.
Yeah, since you brought that up, um, Shannon asked me to remind everyone, we're gonna have a booth. And so we're gonna have, you know, at least probably two council members every week to be at that booth. So, yeah, start thinking about which ones work in your schedule. I think it's every weekday.
Every Thursday.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe get as many people as possible to the first one.
Sorry?
People as possible to the first one.
Yeah.
Just to.
Yeah, well, we'll have a sign-up sheet. We don't have to decide right now, but just put it on your calendar, your mental calendar. All right, CML Advisory, did you have, you probably don't have anything for that, right?
I don't, but again, to mention the annual meeting is in two weeks. So, um, I know Jen and HG3, you mentioned they'll do a tour. I know town staff is doing a handful of tours to our housing development, so, um, just a lot of good things going off on to Joff Breckenridge.
And then social equity?
The, I previously reported on that meeting and I hope everyone read the minutes in our packet. I think it's great to really hear what the commissioners are saying. And with that, we're gonna talk housing again in our July meeting. So I think if any council members have the time to attend and listen directly to what commissioners are saying about the runway project, otherwise it'll be recorded. What's the date?
That's the sixteenth, is that right?
That is the third Wednesday, so that's the sixteen.
Yeah, it is.
At five-thirty.
Five-thirty here.
Yeah.
On the sixteenth.
Yep.
July.
July.
Did I say July?
Yeah, you did.
Good. I was like, wait.
All right, and Arts and Cultural Master Plan?
The survey is live and getting tons of, uh, feedback, right? Yeah.
See, we need the, the people who know the things. We didn't say about Pride, this is Pride Week two as well.
One suggestion on the survey, I think we did a pretty good job of getting the excitement, here it comes, and, you know, stuff out. But I really encourage to keep that drum beating, to get people to, to, to continue filling it out for the duration of the, of.
I think I mentioned it last time, that, uh, if you, if you don't fill it out online, then I send you a postcard to, to remind you to. So they're, they're going after you and.
About three or four different lists, or I've got three or four of them, but I'm trying to send them out on my own.
Then also, if you don't get it online or in the mail, which the mail ones haven't hit people's post offices yet, then, um.
Knocking on the door.
The partner organizations, if you're on any of their lists, they're in the, all their newsletters. And those are starting to go out too.
But remember, the, 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 the success of this is they get community-wide input, not just people that are on the lists already. You know, so I, that's why I'm saying just keep that drumbeat going, you know, to, to, you know, where, where can you see the QR code to, to, uh, to access it? If you, if it wasn't emailed to you or you're not gonna get a card because you're not on a, on one of our lists. Cause a lot of our workforce and many community members aren't on any of those lists, so.
Yeah, and our, our consultant has purchased rental, um, owner lists, mailing address lists. And so it, the postcards are going to those rent, renters', um, post office boxes. Um, so that's going out in the mailer. And then also FERC and Mountain Dreamers are getting, um, the surveys and that'll go out in their contacts too. So if your spouse is the one who gets the billing for water billing, that's the person who probably has.
But also, remember it comes from Corona Insights, which is.
Yes.
Not something you would open.
Yeah, right.
That's a little bit.
No, that's great. Sounds like there's a lot of effort, but I, you know, just the, really the encouragement of send the link to somebody else and so somebody else can fill it out. I'm assuming they can use the same link to.
Yeah, they're kind of tied to the different organizations, different for certain reasons, but, um, because we're tracking things. But, um, but yeah, you could send like the, um, NRO's newsletter, for example, to, to Marika and that would work.
Right.
All right. I think we'll do other matters later. Everyone ready for anything else we need to cover?
We have a couple of quick things, that's all. One is, and the FERC Culinary Showdown is on June twenty-sixth. Also happens to be the night of the CML, the first one of CML.
Maybe the second or third night.
Might be the third night.
The twenty-sixth, I think it's the last night of CML.
Twenty-sixth, five to nine P M. If you'd like to attend with a guest, please cut, please let me know or contact, um, Peyton as well, if you'd mind us.
That's the Castro. That's the cast reception.
Is that right?
It is.
Cast reception night as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, showdown. We are looking for an eager volunteer who would like to speak at the Summit Foundation Golf Tournament and give a short spiel.
Um, IRV speed on that, yeah.
Yeah.
If you'd like someone else.
I would love.
Oh, yeah. Happy to jump on that if that helps.
I'd love you to.
Great, easy.
On my list, not, I didn't, I didn't know that, that's great. Not because I wanted someone else.
Any, anyone else?
Nobody's RSVP.
Anyone?
One other small thing, and this is a very small mention, we had, uh, we are going to bring back the Childcare and Breck Montessori update to you when we have more information. We were planning to bring it to you, I believe, next meeting, but I'm not sure.
You're, you're going to bring it, man, I'm sorry?
Remember, as soon as we have enough information to give you real numbers, we're vetting last different options.
If we came to dinner.
All right.
Thank you.
Terrific, thank you. Okay, we're going to adjourn till the night meeting. Meeting adjourned. Let's check.